All right, good evening. Supposedly you can hear me. It is Monday, March 4th, 2019 at about 7:02, and we'll call the meeting in order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, again, good evening, and congratulations to those that have survived the ice and snow here today. We, this is, I think, our fifth, well, fourth, plus our joint workshop. I think this is our fourth or fifth meeting essentially that's been dedicated to budgets. We are up against a deadline of Wednesday, March 6th, I believe, to have our transmittal, our first transmittal, or, well, I should say our final, to the Budget Committee, so that we are all about the budget tonight. Do you want to do a quick roll call, since we're here?
Counselor Hilton.
Present.
Counselor DiMediris.
Present.
Counselor Katz.
Present.
Counselor Coulter.
Present.
Counselor Cook.
Here.
Counselor Dreggs.
Present.
Counselor Perry is absent.
He's ill.
Wow.
He's wounded.
So, our agenda is all about the budget for fiscal year 2019, 2020. By budget, we mean the budget, revenue estimates, and possible council resolutions, although I don't think we're on a deadline on the council resolutions, per se, but we certainly are on the budgets, so, correct me if I'm wrong. I know Counselor Katz has a presentation that he'd like to give. Is there any objection? If we just go ahead and turn the floor over to him?
Yep.
And then we'll go from there.
You don't mind, I'm gonna go in the audience.
Yeah, I'm gonna get out of the way, too, so you can see the screen. All right, go ahead, Justin.
Okay, I was recently pacing around my lair, thinking of all the troubles that the councils face, the towns facing, the OPEB and pensions, and also the opportunities presented to us with casino revenue, also a new administrator, a new superintendent, and I had a crazy notion that I throw against the wall and see if it sticks, and that's maybe put forward a budget that compromises and puts us on a strong footing to enter a new year, to actually come up with a longer-term plan, so we can get some of these challenges all together and get some people's expectations for spending and taxes, kind of, at least in under discussion, for future budget cycles. So, as I pondered this, I formulated, for myself now, this is not speaking for the council, four goals, basically. To achieve a tax rate that's the average among neighboring communities, to address structural and capital needs that we clearly have, and, as I just said, to establish a long-term plan that accounts for all liabilities with more stability in budgeting, so we can stop surprising each other, and, in that way, I hope, to end the acrimony and division in town. So, the, some of you who followed the budget, my budget presentations in the past will recognize this chart. This is the actual tax levies, the red line, for the town, taken from our town audit, so they might not match perfectly with FTR dockets. And the blue line is what the budget would have been if our 1990 levy continued at inflation, and the gray dotted line is what the 2006 levy would have been if it had continued at inflation. And as you can see, we've long been above either line. The actual increase since 1990 has been 250 percent. At inflation, it would have been 98 percent, which makes a difference in the total levy of about $16.5 million, which inflation will hit in the year 2044, if it continues as it's been. If we start in 2006, our actual budget's gone up 61 percent, our levy has gone up 61 percent. Inflation would have increased it by 36 percent, and that's a delta of just under $6 million, and inflation will hit this year's budget in 2027. Another familiar graphic, updated for this year, the new addition here, everybody hotly anticipated, is Tiverton's tax rate in comparison with all the towns that surround us. You could debate whether crossing the water into Massachusetts counts, but we've been doing better, as you could see in that prior chart, since, in the past five years, the levy hasn't grown much at all. So that's brought us down below Somerset and Warren. Last year, actually, the alternate budget would have brought us below Portsmouth as well, but we're now ninth out of the 11th in the area. A lot of people, well, there's differences of opinion on whether to follow tax rates or tax levies. When you're looking at the towns' changes as we go from year to year, the tax rate doesn't tell you all that much, because especially if there are valuations, it goes up or down, and you just end up paying what you pay on your house, even if the tax rate changes. But if you're looking across borders, the tax rate does matter. If you look at the next town over, and it's significantly lower, somebody buying a house can buy a bigger house, because they expect the tax rate will be lower and they'll pay less taxes. So, what ends up happening, and I think we had a good natural experiment on this with the last valuation, was when property values and taxes are too high, the higher-end houses, oops, sorry, the higher-end houses will be more sensitive to that difference, and so their property values and taxes will decrease, because when you're talking about a million-dollar house, you're talking about something like $100,000 you can spend additional if your tax rates are lower by a few dollars. And when that happens, because the levy just gets distributed around town according to the property values, the lower-end houses, their tax burden goes up, because proportionally they make up more of the total property value in a town. And I think we saw that with the last valuation, where some of the higher-end houses actually saw tax decreases, while some of the working-class and middle-class houses saw tax burden increase. And looking at some local real estate statistics, I found this fascinating, obviously, this is correlation, I'm not alleging an exact correspondence. If you look at these two charts, which I got from, that's hard to see, Altos Research, Real Estate Research, this is, they call this the Market Action Index, and if you're at the 30 mark, which is around here for Tiverton, and around here for Portsmouth, below that, it's a buyer's market, so you'll have to bring your house value down in order to capture the market. If you're above that, it's a seller's market, so people have to pay more to get the same-sized house. And the blue line at the bottom, that's the higher end, that's the top 25 percent, the top quarter of all houses on the market at the time. What's fascinating here is, last year, around this time, we had our FTR and a revaluation, and it dropped our tax rate from 1905 to 1639, while at the same time, Portsmouth went up a bit from 1542 to 1597, and as you can see, Portsmouth, when they were settling on their, around the same time they were settling on their tax levy and rates, their high-end market, which had been doing well, pretty well, dropped down to about the line that breaks between sellers and buyers' markets, whereas Tiverton, whose high-end market had been struggling, started to move upwards. And again, that's just correlation, but I think it's intriguing and telling. So, that's when we come to this year's budget, and with admission that the first budgets are always meant to be reviewed and raised discussion, not necessarily to be enacted on the spot, if you put together the initial request by the administrator and the school department, you end up with a property tax levy increase of 7.7 percent, based on the revenue estimates at the time, which would have made the tax rate 1716, which is a significant increase, and it would have put a new uptick on my favorite chart here. So with that context, I saw an opportunity for a solution, and the way I went about assessing that, or putting it into concrete ideas, was first, we have to assess our position, start getting everything on the table, agree to a reasonable compromise all around, and then make a plan for the future, so we can deal with challenges and parenthetically each other, which can often be the hardest part, except OPEB, OPEB might be harder to deal with than other people, but that was a joke. So where we stand right now is a pretty strong footing from a budgetary standpoint. We've got a $3 million statutory guarantee for gambling revenue from the Twin River Casino, which also comes with additional amounts, not only an increase in the property values because of the casino, but sports betting, detail pay, where the town gets a portion of the money paid to have police and firefighters there at all times, also the state gives additional money for hotels and restaurants to the locality. And actually, I just mentioned, this year, we have a 3 percent increase in our total property valuation, which incorporates things like Twin River becoming online, Longplex, and just general building and growth. And then we have a series of fund balances, which is the table on the right. The first column, that's actual or projected by the end of this year, the audited fund balance was 2.8 million, which was significantly above what we have to have per the charter, which is 3 percent of the operating expenses of the town, schools, and municipal. And so that leaves usable of that amount above 3 percent, 1.2 million. There are also, as we've discussed various issues around town, we've put numbers on, for example, a Bay Street legal settlement to deal with the pollution up there and the toxic waste. There's 371,000 in that account at the moment. At the moment, there's 382,300 for work, restricted to work on the industrial park, and probably around the end of the year, we'll have carrying-forward balances on paving and drainage and capital reserves. And we also just sold a lot at the industrial park. And the stamp tax revenue, last year, we had a resolution that changed the way the stamp tax is distributed, which shifted a good portion of it toward the town's budget as opposed to a restricted open space account. So that's money that's just probably to be collected this year, and available for use in the next year if we want to use it. And so that, all of that in consideration, brought me to, what I'm suggesting is the reasonable compromise budget, and I want to stress here that this is just suggestions that Town Council doesn't have final authority over the budget that goes on the docket, and certainly not over the school department's budget. So these are just how I would see the pieces all fitting together as that compromise proposal. So at the top, we would see a 2 percent increase in the local contribution to the school department, which with state aid, brings their total increase to just under 4 percent. We would hold our municipal operating expense increase to 1.8 percent. One area where we have a lot of work we need to do is in capital expenses, and with the administrator's good work putting together a capital plan, which, as I hear rumors that the Town Council President really likes that plan, that would, all of those pieces together would come up with a budget total of $54,865,134. You might round up or down, it might be 35 or 33, I don't know. But that would be an increase of 6.3 percent, and would allow a tax levy, given the extra revenue, of a negative 2 percent reduction in the tax levy. One footnote on that is that in, last year, because the casino became online during the year, there was $300,000 in prorated property tax that counted on our revenue line, not in our tax line, so that's getting absorbed into our levy this year. But if you factor that in, the 2 percent reduction in taxes is actually a 2.6 percent reduction. Now, since I've mentioned the schools and a suggestion there for them, and they have initially asked for a larger local increase, I wanted to just put in context another of my repeated charts here, that they've used a good amount of their fund balance this year, apparently, but there's still about $2 million of fund balance in there, about half is unassigned and half is committed. I'm not putting that forward to suggest anybody spend that on anything, I'm just suggesting that there is a little bit of room for compromise and taking a little bit of risk on a slightly lower number than might have been requested. And so, looking forward and assuming that all that has happened, and we're all holding hands into a bright future come June, July.
Kumbaya.
Kumbaya, although there might be better, you know, come-together songs than kumbaya, it's kind of old. I would propose, that will put us on a good footing to all kind of get together after that, put everything on the table, every concern we have, every intention, we'll look at the school budgets, municipal budgets, we have the landfill projected at this point to be closing at the end of 2020. We've got, there is off-budget money that pops up sometimes, that I don't know that we all have a handle on, we can address, you know, the shoreline, and, I'm choking on a phrase, but climate change? That was for the administrators. And, you know, if anybody, if anybody really wants to be concerned about it, we could always plan for a zombie apocalypse. I'm not especially concerned about it, but some people might be, and you could put that on there. And of course, there are the other earth-ending catastrophes, pensions and OPEB, that other post-benefit employments that we would want to put on the table as well. And once we've got all that, we can start to see how all the pieces interact, and what opportunities we have, where we need to rethink things, or reorganize things, and we can put together something like this very rough draft, a rough draft of a plan, and of course, there would be more lines with OPEB and personnel and all that stuff. But I'm not going to go through all these numbers, and you're welcome for that, but the basic idea is everybody can, we can settle on what a reasonable increase would look like over time for the tax levy, for spending, and we can also keep an eye on things like the tax rate. So by this rough, rough plan I've put together, in the year after this budget that we're preparing now, our tax levy, if everybody else around us continues at the same trajectory on their tax rates that they've been, our tax rate would actually be the median of that map that I've showed before, which would mean we are actually the middle town. And if we kept on that path, and everybody else did as well, by 2024, we would hit the goal I outlined at the beginning, which is the average tax rate of the area. And that would be a good place, I think, to settle in, and really, at that point, we could start to address some of our longer-term problems. And that was, that's the extent of my presentation. So, to get the conversation started, I wanted to, I had attached a budget plan with my presentation, and I would like to move that as the starting point for our Town Council budget.
I'm sorry, what are you doing, Justin?
I just wanted to move the budget that I proposed in the backup for this meeting.
The thing that's attached to your presentation that we all got.
Right. And I would move that as the starting point for our budget discussion.
I'll second that discussion.
Mr. President, but there will be discussion, because I want to go through the line items.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And I didn't see it from the side, but was there a question, there will be discussion, but was there any particular questions on the slides that were just presented? Was somebody from the audience have a question? Or was that?
Can the council ask questions about those slides?
Yeah, let's, I don't have a better suggestion than just an open floor, and I have a few comments myself, but I'll reserve them. Go ahead. Do you want to, did you want to start, or you just?
I don't know, I was just asking if any of us had any comments.
Oh, sure, okay. Let me, let me.
Trish, do you, or do you want to?
I do, but.
No, I think I want to go line item by line item, if that's okay, page by page, the whole budget, because I have some concerns, but hopefully they'll be answered. I don't really have much on page one, but I think I'm going to have to join all this together. The council contingency, the town administrator asked for 185. In 1819, there was 100,000, and we use that, and I know there's been a lot of different opinions about this, but when we go into negotiations, we put what we perceive as raises and whatever we need to increase with the negotiations in that budget. Now it's down to 25,000, and I do have a lot of concerns about that, because we do have two contracts that we're going to start negotiating, and that will be expiring in June of 2019. So I don't know where, if we decided to give raises for those unions, where that would come from. That's my first concern.
And just, do you mind if we jump in on that?
Sure, sure.
Because, just for everyone following along, what we're on is page two, right?
1020 Town Council.
1020 Town Council.
And contingency fund 6890.
And so, there used to be something called Future Needs in the past.
Yeah, but what we did, and this was with cooperation with the Budget Committee, they didn't like the idea of Future Needs, this was way back, so we had a contingency fund plus a Future Needs. So the Future Needs were basically what the raises were, so it was very obvious what that was. So we incorporated into calling it the Contingency Fund. And that's where, as we all know, as the year goes on, we do take from this contingency fund where different items are, at some point in the year, at 0 percent, and we take from that, but we also use that during negotiations. So on a negotiation year, we don't even have to worry about that, or incorporate that there. But we are going into the Teamsters and Ask Me, and that's what concerns me, we only have 25,000 in there. I don't ever remember it being that low, maybe when it was just a contingency fund and we had a Future Needs, but I'm just concerned, when we do go into negotiations, and if we do negotiate raises for next year, where will that come from? And if we go into next year, usually, it's retroactive, so we need some kind of a fund to take that from. So, I'm not criticizing, I'm just asking if there's a plan, if that does happen, because 25,000 isn't going to cut it. The police, I think it was like 95,000 was the cost of what we just negotiated. So, I'm just asking if anyone.
We had $100,000 in the contingency fund last year, in part, if we were able to settle police and fire, that we would be able to do that, because we had cash available to work with. And in addition, you know, things come up during the year, things break, stuff goes wrong, you know, something that we budgeted, you know, the cost spikes, the cost of heating oil spikes up, whatever it is. I mean, $25,000, forgetting the contract thing, is not a lot to deal with if there's an emergency.
Now, just this year, the contingency fund, I'm sure, is going to have to be used for the building official salary, which we've been scraping to get, but I, that would be a place where we have money when that happens.
My recollection, a lot, a huge part of what was asked for was when we were starting, even with the police and fire, and concerned there might be arbitration, which now is not an issue, so.
Yeah, but we're going, well, we don't know if that's an issue yet, we still have the fire, and we have an arbitration date, but we are going into two more contracts.
Yeah.
So, we don't know where the future's going to hold in those two contracts. And I have to tell you, I've been doing this a long time, that $25,000 isn't going to cut it, I don't think, unless we have a plan somewhere.
And I might just add, let's see how this goes, I think we identify a line item, we open floor it, and see if this can work out. I share the concern about, I mean, I think from the contracts, and I'm sure Justin has some comments on this, that, we have two there, and, well, one has been approved, I think, almost ink is dry on that, I think.
Yes, it's done.
And we're looking, you know, very optimistic on another with two more, but on the, we talked, at one of the prior workshops, about this possibility of a swing fund, and I know that it can sometimes look a little controversial, but in a perfect world, it seems to me, you wouldn't over-budget any of the line items, but you'd have one swing fund, kind of like what, you know.
Well, that's what the contingency fund.
Right, and so, so I share the concern that 25 is a little, a little light, if that is the swing fund. I mean, the labor contracts, we could simply take the view that there will not be any labor spending in the current year.
Yeah, but keep in mind, even the fire contract, even if we do settle it, we're going to go retroactive a year. So, thank God we have.
That's for sure, right?
Right, but that's, but.
But this year, though.
Right, but what I'm saying is, that will come from the contingency fund.
This year.
This year. So if suppose next year, we don't settle with the other unions till mid-year, and we have to go retroactive, where are we going to get that money from? It's not going to be budgeted, so that's what worries me. I don't know where we'll take it from, I mean, we could always transfer something, but I don't want to jeopardize other accounts. So, that, that's just, that's.
Since you were brave enough to wear the bullseye.
Yeah, Justin.
I mean, I'll, I'll, but I don't, I don't know how much, I don't want to go too far, but I did originally develop this, but with the police and fire contracts included, as well as I could.
Right, but.
And so, so there's some, but I took that out, because it's not all settled, so I don't want to, you know, speak out of turn on that kind of thing. So that was considered when I went to the idea of 25,000 here. I would, what I would suggest is, we could always come back to this, and as we go, if there are other lines that want to be reduced or transferred, that might be a place we could park some money. I also want to note, I don't know how closely everybody's had a chance to look at the materials that we just got, but we just, we just received some new revenue estimates that it looks like, on the whole, they're up.
I think the stamp went up, is it the stamp that went up?
No, no.
No, it's something that went up, I'm sorry. I looked at this like an hour and a half ago.
But there are various, there are various lines on here that, in addition to the building official, that might have been, they might have been updated between when I last received something and when I set. So what I just moved was the revenue sheet that came with my proposal, and there are, I don't know, seven or eight lines that look like, on the whole, were up. So there may be an opportunity at the end to put some of that in a contingency fund without, without changing the bottom-line numbers.
Now, while we're on that, if you don't mind, Rob, I'll just ask my questions while I'm here. On the police.
Would you rather go page by page, and see if anybody has them, or do you?
Yeah, okay, yeah. No, it's all right, I have it all, go ahead. So I'm at Town Council, so.
Let me.
The Board of Canvases, I do have some questions, and that's towards Nancy.
Let me just take a shot at page by page, if that's, I don't mean to cut you off.
Well, she's still on.
I'm still on page two.
Okay, well, was everybody okay with page one? I know a lot of that has been reclassified, I mean, I don't think the bonds are under much debate, but.
No.
And then the big takeaway is that what you've seen before in non-recurring major expenditures are now on a subsidiary capital budget, so there's, that's a separate schedule. So that's the big, for those that are studying the docket. Okay, so back to page two.
Right, just to clarify, we're talking capital, I did go back to last year and restate the relevant line items, like paving, as capital, so those, so it's easier to compare.
But then it shows up back in the.
Right, those are on the capital plan, and also, it totals at the bottom, at the end of the page, in the grand totals, the 403,500 is separate, not in the operating expense, so I didn't double-count it or anything, but just so people are aware, that wasn't how it was accounted last year, I just moved it all right there.
And I'm sorry, remind me, the major-time finance payments, the lease payments, are those resident now in the new capital budget, or those are?
Are they right here?
They're treated like debt service, essentially, even though they're paying for capital items.
Right, they're operating, essentially, this year.
Okay, all right, so back to page two.
All right, Board of Canvases, 1030, Board of Canvases, I'm looking at the election restricted account 6329, and this would be, I don't know if Nancy has concerns about this, it was zeroed out, so I'm just worried, because what does a referendum cost, Nance? About?
We spend the $11,500 that we budgeted for, but I will say on this one, last year, the council voted to add $15,000 to that.
All right, never mind, Justin just reminded me that's separate.
The FTR.
The FTR is separate.
Yeah, separate from the election.
But the general.
But we do have a presidential election coming up, and I'm just saying, last year, the Budget Committee and the council voted to add $15,000 in case we had a special election. At the time, there was discussion, there would, could be a special election, what would it cost, and they added it. So that's why currently we have a balance close to $50,000 in there.
It's 51809, as of January 31st.
However, I would not give it a zero balance, I would at least put 10,000 in there, because what's going to happen? We got on this plan and this practice so that we avoid the peaks and valleys. I will use that money on the presidential, between the presidential election. If we don't keep some consistent amount going in there, you're going to find that you're budgeting full election. budgeting full election expense. And those election expenses continually grow with what the state requires for you to do, and with the manpower it takes to do it. So, it wouldn't be my recommendation to zero it, I would at least say, put ten thousand in there.
I would, I mean, as Denise just said, there's fifty-one thousand dollars in there, and I went back to audits back to two thousand and seven, which, there was no election line before that, for some reason, in our audit. But we've never, ever spent more than, I think it was thirty-eight thousand dollars in an, in an election year, and next year's not an election year, so if we, if we, if the budget after this one, we can put more money into it, but I'm, I think we're, we're over-budgeted by more than a year's worth of expenses in this restricted account. That's, that was my thinking.
It will, but I, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to run an election, whether I've got the money in there or not, so you better...
Right, but right now, Nancy...
...leave that contingency open.
Well, what I'm asking you is, right now, this fifty-one eight oh nine, as of January, January.
As of January thirty-first, there are continual expenses that come out of it.
Right, so do you think that zeroing it will be okay?
Well, I don't like to have to budget forty thousand some year, because I've got an election. The idea and the plan of the council and the Budget Committee was twenty-five thousand one year, fifteen thousand twenty another, that's how we kept it kind of even. I don't think the twenty-five thousand is going to be necessary, but I'd still put ten thousand in there.
Justin, and you're looking back at, at the, at the, what's been in the account, was there always, how much sort of was there always as a balance?
Oh, well, I think the restricting plan is actually pretty, pretty recent, or at least that we've actually put money into it. But if you go back, so thirty-eight thousand is the, the biggest election year expense, the non-election year is what this budget is, is non-election, have been never more than twenty-ish. So, my thinking here is, even if we spend that twenty next year, we'll still have thirty-one in the balance for the next year, and we put in our fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, whatever we think we'll need for the election year, and we're, we're on track. I just think the, the fifteen, twenty-five has been, has accumulated more than is needed in the account, so I, I think we can take a break from it this year.
Well, I think it added up, the way that we were anticipating, but...
It is restricted, and it does, but I have to tell you, elections have never been like they are now, and they're more costly, and there's more to do on it, and it requires more manpower. I'm just saying, I don't care, because the next year, we'll just have to make a budget, so it's not...
I'll just ask him.
Okay.
Okay, so any other questions or comments on page two of the docket?
Yes, I still do, I'm sorry.
No, this is taking, I think we're doing well, go ahead.
No, this is ongoing, and this comes to my contingency problem. Electricity in almost every facility is spent. At this point in January, seventy-three percent. So, it doesn't worry me too much, but we're only seven months into this budget, or six months into this budget, and that's what we use contingency for. If the electric bills went a little bit higher, we'd, we'd pull from the contingency. So, that's just like, we had a problem with electricity last year, too, and we pulled from contingency. And I was looking at all the electric accounts, and they were all up over seventy percent as of January. So, that just worried me, that's it.
Yeah, I was looking at the water and supplies, and I noted that with the audit, the original was seven hundred dollars, four hundred dollars was transferred out, and three hundred dollars was spent, and all of a sudden, it's eight hundred dollars. I just think it should go down to seven hundred dollars originally, what it was.
The water and supplies are already in the red, Donna, as of January.
It's, it's some point you can't...
Well, I know, but I've just, that might be what Jan was looking at, was we've already spent a hundred and one percent of that account. So, apparently, our water supply, our water and supplies are going up. Yeah, I did see that, but then I noticed that we've, it's, it's in the red already. No, yeah. The Water Department is behind.
Oh, I see, okay.
But then, still, we have nothing in that account for the rest of the year.
I see, thank you, Jan.
This is fourteen ten, about one oh four, water, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I saw that, too, but then I saw what we spent.
There were already over seven hundred dollars for that.
Yeah, a hundred and one percent of that's already been...
I guess so, because they're already, we're not even done with, I mean...
So, you would increase it?
Although, the, the snow's going to melt off the roof.
It's already eight hundred, eight hundred dollars will be mine.
Okay, so that might be a little light.
Yeah.
But just keep in mind, that's why we always had some kind of contingency to put a hundred here and a hundred there.
Sure, sure.
It's just proving my contingency thing, right?
Contingency, yeah, well...
I'm only kidding, Rob, I really am.
No, no, I, I said I share the, I just like to approach the table with a tight belt.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, page two, if we can come back on anything, I just want, is everybody okay? Okay. And I have stuff, stuff on this page, but I'll, I'll open it up for others.
Page three, I'm looking at labor, seventy-one ninety, legal services, ten fifty. So, Jan had asked for seventy-five thousand, and I understand we spend a lot because of the fire and police this year, but as of January, we had already spent seventy percent of that labor, and we're keeping it sixty. I don't know if I should be concerned, because I don't know how the other two negotiations have gone, and keep in mind, we still haven't settled with fire, so if we do go into arbitration, hopefully, fingers crossed and legs crossed, we won't. We only, we only have like thirty percent left in that account, and, yeah, and I don't know if that's why you brought it up, fifteen thousand? Because you requested seventy-five.
Right. That was based on the observation that our expenses on Labor Council seem to be increasing fairly significantly now. That more like, is more likely than not associated with, you know, the contract negotiations, because he's spending an awful lot of time, but we are, it's quite possible that we will still have negotiations going on in next year, so I'm not sure. I think on, on these legal services things, too, I sort of want to play it safe, but if you want to take risk, then you can do so.
Are you comfortable with the sixty, or you, you know, I, I thought your seventy-five was conservative if we went into arbitration. It's looking like, because I've been involved in arbitration before, and that gets ridiculously high.
And that's also true, that at the time, we first did the first draft of the, the budget, it actually was still quite likely that we were going into arbitration.
Meaning, we've got Ask Me and the Teamsters next year, so if we were, if we were in the middle of, you know, all the contracts were settled, and we didn't have anything coming up, then I would feel more comfortable, you know, with a lesser budget, but we've still got one contract that's not settled, and we have two that are about to start. I don't see cutting that line item. I mean, having good Labor Council is important.
I, I'll just, I, I had, I thought I'd heard, and I think I'm correct, that the seventy-five was in part in anticipation of, of continuing and having three or maybe even four negotiations still ongoing next year, and that looks increasingly unlikely that we'll have more than just the two. So, that, that was my thinking in, in going back to this, the older line for that increase. So, I do have, I've been seeing firsthand the value of, of good Labor Council, so I definitely don't want to...
I know, and Tim is invaluable, so, you know, I, the other two, the two negotiations we're doing now cannot go into, well, they can go into non-binding arbitration, but there's not a binding arbitration, so it's less likely they're going to do that, but I am, I don't, we'll just think about that, but I just wanted to bring that up.
And I don't know how the, the President wants to handle this, but my, my expectation of the process in moving the, the entire budget was that, as people want to move to amend line items, that would be certainly in order, in my, my opinion, as we go, and we can adjust my document as, as that happens. Does that sound correct?
Do you want to wait till the end?
My preference, and I'm just one person, is everybody, we get one pass through, so we kind of know, and their, a solution might avail itself, or maybe not, and then we'll come back, and is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine, I was just, been studying my Roberts rules.
Okay, that's...
I didn't bring my book today.
Hopefully, we won't need to, we don't have a parliamentarian here. For those that are keenly observing the rates of our legal counsel, the Labor Council, Justin, did you still assume, the current rate is two hundred and forty dollars an hour, is that the same assumption would hold?
I, I didn't change, the only change I had anticipated was that we wouldn't be going up against so many negotiations.
Okay. And while we're on legal services, I, I, you know, I'm just one person, but I'd like to see the council consider a reduction, the town administrator may disagree, with the town solicitor line item, not the Labor Council line item. I just feel that a hundred thousand dollars is, is a, is a little heavy, and for those that are crunching numbers, the way I come at it is, if you had two meetings a month, and you staff that meeting for four hours at a hundred and seventy-five dollars an hour, which I think is probably a fair market rate, maybe, and if you did, you know, for those of us that think about preparing for board meetings, or studying for class, you know, that kind of rule that you should do two hours for, prep for every hour of the meeting, you know, maybe that holds, maybe it doesn't. So, that would be eight hours of prep for a meeting, that'd be forty-two hundred dollars per meeting, at two a month, and if you add in a couple extra meetings, just because we have some special meetings, that would be sixty-three thousand dollars. So, we're not even close to a hundred thousand dollars on that. Again, this isn't litigation, this is just basically meeting attendance in a retainer, and some fairly, you know, based on what I've seen in the last ten years, some pretty light special project work. But if you assumed that once a quarter, there was special projects of, say, twenty hours a project, that's a lot of time. At a hundred and seventy-five dollars an hour, that'd be fourteen thousand dollars, that gets you to seventy-seven thousand dollars. And if my numbers are wrong, and you add a ten percent cushion, that's eighty, eighty-five thousand dollars. So, at some point, if we come back for line item voting, I'm, I'm very tempted to, to move that down to eighty-five thousand dollars. We are going to go to RFP, starting July first, and I'm pretty confident that we'll be able to get, and again, this is just for general solicitation, right? This is not for land use, for labor, for bond council, for the sewer district, for labor, so that's just my, my input on, on legal services.
Rob, is it all right if I comment on that?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Um, I was, I, as everyone knows, I've been Town Council president for a few years, and as my experience, as a town solicitor is available daily with, with problems, and I do know that the town administrator deals with it constantly, because people come into that office with, with legal problems that he needs to talk to the solicitor about. Some of the projects, like, we, like doing an ordinance for us, or a resolution for us, that takes a lot of time, there's been a lot of those. But, but daily, I believe, the town solicitor's called, and by Nancy, because Nancy needs advice constantly with what goes on in the clerk's office. Well, it's true, there's a lot of problems that go on in the clerk's office, and I, it's not just meetings, it's, it's continuously being on call, even twenty-four hours. I know that we've had to call him on weekends when something has come up, or in the middle of the night. So, it's not, I think a hundred thousand is reasonable for the amount of time we, we use this man. But that's just my opinion, I don't know if Nancy or Jan want to add to this, but my experience, he's worth every penny we pay for him, because if not, there'd be more lawsuits. His advice is constant.
I, if I may, I, I would agree, I think that's one of the things that, you know, you get what you pay for, and if you want a really good, experienced municipal solicitor who's not going to make mistakes and not going to get you in litigation, then, you know, you need, you need to pay for that experience, and you need to pay for that quality of work. There aren't that many of them in Rhode Island that do a lot of this, that are really good. We are particularly a needy town, because we're not so homogeneous here, and, and, you know, the solicitor runs into a lot of interesting things, but I think that that's, you know, one of those things where you can be penny-wise and pound-foolish, and it's, if you want to well-run town, and, and you want to avoid liability, and you want to avoid a lot of litigation, you need somebody really good in that office.
I'm sort of also aware of the fact that I think this is one of the areas that we've talked about, we want to sort of reevaluate how we use the solicitor, and maybe past practice isn't going to be the current practice, so I don't know how that plays into it.
Yeah, and I don't disagree with anything, in fact, I'd be the first to agree that you get what you pay for, and, and I'm, I'm kind of glad to hear that point's acknowledged. I'm just proposing what I think is a, you know, a hundred thousand dollars becomes one of the highest line items in the budget, and I'm suggesting we cut the total legal services spend from two hundred and eighty-five down to two seventy, which is a very, very modest decrease, so I don't think it'll hurt any, anything at all. I mean, a hundred thousand dollars, I mean, you start to get to that point where you could hire a full-time, and believe me, this is not my suggestion, but if you think about cities and other towns that have, you know, have on in-house counsel, I mean, we're kind of getting, I mean, it's just a big number, and I think some points, some good points were raised on the Labor Council need, and, so anyway, that's just my, my, my two cents, but I appreciate the feedback.
If I, could I?
Yep.
I, I just, if I'm not mistaken, this is based on the rate of the, you know, prior town solicitor as well, and I will say that both then and now, I do find myself needing legal advice way more than I would ever want to, and it is on a daily basis, and it is because I feel that if I don't get that advice, you know, we might be taking risks that we shouldn't be taking. I don't want to overdramatize it, but it's just, and it's usually very routine stuff, but not stuff that I can make a decision on by myself, and I am not the only one. Town clerk has a regular need for that, the building office very, very frequently has to talk to the town solicitor as well. I do think that there was, you know, some talk, and I, I think justifiably so, to look at, can we manage how we collectively use a town solicitor's time? I, I think it's worth looking into, it's worth trying to manage it, but I think right now, you, you definitely need this kind of money, unfortunately, perhaps.
Jan, how's it handled if you call him? Are you billed by fifteen minutes, the hour?
No, it's, it's salary, really, it's, it's salary.
It's just included in it?
Right, right.
So, you've never had a sense that with all the times you've been calling him, that he is not making enough?
Well, they submit invoices, so you get a sense of how much time is spent where, which we actually should be able to use to see, well, you know, do we really need to eat up this much of this time for that particular type of issue? And, but when it comes to the solicitor's part of the legal services budget, it is in fact, you know, it's, it's cap. So, you go up to the cap, and then, I think it has been routinely exceeded, if I'm, I'm not mistaken, I'm not, no, I thought, well, certainly in Warren, it was...
No, this is what we pay him, no matter if we use him...
No, 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 I, I mean, in terms of what would happen if he were paid by the hour.
Oh, then that would, forget it. We'd, we'd be in trouble some months, we really would.
Right.
And, and it's not just our problems, it's, it's the community coming in here with, with very different issues, and it's, it's everybody, it's, it's, there's a lot of issues in Tiverton, but I'm sure it is like that everywhere else. I mean, I don't think we're that unique, we're a little unique, we're a little unique, but I don't think we're that unique.
Okay, well, while I'm at it, see if I can't generate more controversy. So, this is not the forum for probably an extended discussion, but I do want to suggest that, you know, just one person here, but I would like to see at some point, the consideration, maybe it can't be done right away, but a consideration of a performance incentive structure. It doesn't have to be large, but it would go something along the lines, real back-of-the-envelope stuff. How many, how many department heads, Jan, do we have reporting you, I think, is it six?
I've never counted them, but I think it's...
It's like a half a dozen, plus, you know?
I think it's seven.
If you just took, you know, seven or eight at, say, at an average salary, and you, and you had a, a, a target performance pool of about ten percent, you know, you'd be in around a fifty thousand dollar budget line item, and of course, in an incentive program, not everybody hits, gets the incentive, and not everybody gets the full amount. So, if you cut that in half, this is back-of-the-envelope stuff, I mean, you know, you'd be talking about twenty-five thousand dollars, and just throwing it out there, but I think it would be something to consider, that we fund that at even one quarter of the beginning of a beginning, because I know it's hard to do it all, but you start, and you can ramp up and ramp down, but even a sixty-five hundred dollar... But even a $6,500 pool to at least give it a shot. And then that pool would be administered by the town administrator to allocate across the department heads. And then there should probably be some portion of that pool that the town council could use to consider. So I don't think this is very inconsistent from those of us, best practices in the private sector. And I know it's a big topic, but I just wanted to make sure that I threw it out there for those that are interested in funding it with a small line item.
I'd be...
Anybody want to take a shot at that?
I'd actually, I'd actually be supportive of that. I think that, I think that it's very common in the private sector, it's done fairly regularly. And I'd like to see a way to reward, you know, employees who have done a good job. So I'd be actually quite in favor of some way of implementing a program like that.
I move adjourned.
Yeah.
And then the last thing, since it's here under the town administrator item, and then I promise I'll stop talking for a while, is, so this goes in that category of, I don't know that it can be done now, and it certainly can't be done tonight, but I think there has been some really good work done here. I'll get teased if I say how it's not capital plan. I give a lot of credit to Justin for putting a framework out here that we can all, you know, kick the tires on. And I think at some point, we need to have a conversation about whether there should be a repurposing or some kind of way to find a backup or a deputy town administrator or somebody that can step into that role. That's a big conversation. There probably is a fair conversation to be had about the clerk's desk as well. And I don't know if there might be a current department head that could be maybe split time or something like that. I don't have any specific requests for that now, but I just don't want you to feel blindsided if that comes up in later conversations. But in my estimation, there is a need there, and it's something, as I think we, you know, look at the spreadsheet, the presentation that you just saw, I think it needs to be given some thought, at least at some time. What I really like about where we're going, where I see Justin leading on this presentation is, we can't solve every problem today or this cycle, but we can get them all on the table, try to strike a reasonable compromise, and then really, really continue to roll up our sleeves going into, say, next year. And so I think that we need to have a tough conversation about that. And that's the only other comment I had on page three. Anybody else?
I've got another one.
I have a few too.
This one, I'm going to have Jan take the lead on, and I think you, I don't know if he's prepared, but he'll do it. League of Cities and Towns always seems to be a hot subject every single year, and the town administrator, whoever he may be, always fights for it. Justin did zero it out, and I was wondering what Jan's thoughts were on this.
I, you may have noticed that I take the opportunity frequently to mention how helpful I think the League of Cities and Towns is to municipalities and certainly to people like myself. I believe that that organization does an awful lot of very important research, provides white papers that are exceptionally well researched and organized, and provide a lot of information that it would take us forever to, you know, collect and deal with issues from, you know, say, the motor vehicle tax and how that was handled, and being able to respond to that, you know, on behalf of municipalities, with a lot of the legwork actually being done by staff at the League of Cities and Towns. And it does that on many, many subjects where I think it would be very difficult for us to be as prepared as we should be to respond to or deal with issues that come up in the legislature in particular, but not only in the legislature. There's one other thing. Because we're a member of the League of Cities and Towns, we also participate in that aggregated energy purchase program, which is saving us money, has saved us money, in that the league, on behalf of several, a lot of municipalities, negotiated a contract with direct energy. And that, you know, led to a significant reduction compared to if we got everything from national grid. It just renegotiated that contract and has another entity, and it believes it's going to have additional savings available through that program. So I can't help but wonder, you know, why we would want to give up opportunities like that, where we have a chance to be part of a pool and thereby, you know, realize some benefits that we can certainly use. So I would strongly recommend against zeroing that out. And by the way, the number is not only for the League of Cities and Towns, it's also the Chamber of Commerce. And again, I fully understand that there may be different perspectives on how important these organizations are or what they do for us, but I do believe there is value for the town to be participating in an organization like a regional chamber of commerce, and also, in particular, some of the programs that it is advancing relating to economic development. And if anything, I wish we had more time to participate a little bit more actively in that program, which is a larger discussion about how actively we pursue economic development in this town. But I think the chamber is another example of, we could definitely benefit from it, but you need to put something into it to get that benefit.
How much do each cost?
The league currently is over $6,000, I believe, and the chamber, I believe, is still slightly under $2,500, something like that.
I'd like to throw in a recommendation for the league as well. In addition to the savings, there are many times where the smaller communities or the outline communities, I guess, you know, the communities, put it this way, that aren't Providence, East Providence, Pawtucket, Central Falls, and Warwick, are going to end up with, you know, some sort of terrible unfunded liability per something that's happening at the general assembly. And in the absence of the league, we'd be in a real pickle because they're really the ones that lead the charge, do the lobbying, organize the towns. I've actually, myself, participated a number of times in the league's lobbying efforts against, you know, certain legislation that's floating up around there. And, you know, for communities like Tiverton, having our voices combined with other communities who have the same concern, but also having the league, you know, really sort of being out front on the battle for us is incredibly useful. And it makes a difference when the league is fighting with us. We get a lot more attention and, you know, in some cases, we're able to stop the legislature from, you know, yet again, another thing that turns out to be a favor for a small number of communities, but would severely penalize communities like Tiverton.
I wanted, if I may, add two other examples. One is the interaction we have had over the central landfill and the costs to cities and towns, which clearly have gone up quite a bit. And not that long ago, Resource Recovery developed a new solid waste management plan. And I will say that I think that corporation has a very difficult task, funding what needs to be done at that central landfill. But at the same time, the solid waste management plan it developed really was incredibly burdensome for municipalities. And the league played a very significant role in spotting that and advocating zealously on behalf of municipalities, to the point that I thought they were going overboard a little bit, because I happen to be an environmentalist and I thought that some of it needed to be done and we needed to change the way we think about the cost of throwing our stuff away. But it was so focused on the fiscal impact on municipalities that I was really impressed by. Because I don't think that, hardly any of our communities can do that by itself. And they were very successful, I think, in, you know, making the argument and working with legislators as well as the resource recovery people to moderate the impact of that. It was another one, but it just escaped me, so.
Thank you, Jan.
Okay, any other comments on page three? And I...
I have two.
Just before we get off the League of Cities and Towns, the, I'm not sold on most of that, maybe on the food purchasing, but the rest of it, I mean, we have legislators to lobby for us. The league's going to be lobbying in the name of municipalities anyway, whether we do it or not. And as Jan just indicated, they take a position based on presumably the interests of their members in general, which might differ from any given community or might differ from the voters and the taxpayers as separate from the municipalities themselves. I think it's another, in my view, it's another, one of these groups that Rhode Island likes to generate where, you know, you can get some people who help to make decisions and presume to speak for constituencies, and that's how backroom deals get made. And that's my opinion of the League of Cities and Towns.
Chris, do you have a couple?
I do. I'm just curious, the town administrator salary, not that there are any guarantees here, but there doesn't seem to be any room for a salary increase in this line item.
Town administrator.
Town administrator, department manager salary.
2019, 2020, it stays stable.
Well, I just want to point out that I'm not in the habit of asking for a raise for myself.
You didn't give yourself a raise, I know.
So it was not in my request.
But it may be something we want to consider for that contingency fund. Or we could put the two, what we normally do is put...
Or incentive pool.
Yeah, yeah. For a minute, I had no idea what you were saying.
Well, normally, normally, assuming that our department heads and our town administrator are doing a good job, normally we budget for an increase that if it's merited, we can give. I'm just saying there's nothing that is here.
No, every other department head does have it, I think, except the police. I don't, I think the police chief doesn't have one either.
I think the police chief's is also short.
Yeah, it's short too.
In this budget.
But, but the others have a rate, an increase, just to keep in mind, guys.
And I mean, if we're going to do budgeting, if that's how we're going to budget it, I think we should budget it for this line item. We don't use it, we don't use it, but it should be budgeted. And then my next question is about, in land use, the building official salary. So, you know, one of the things that, and this is, I'm going to talk about the building official, but it's a little bit more than the building official too. You know, a few minutes ago, there was a slide that held up Portsmouth, you know, is a, you know, a community that has, you know, a lower tax rate and all that other kind of stuff. And it seems to be a place that people like to compare us to. And there are a lot of various comparisons, but, you know, one of the things that I've noticed in the past three years of being on the council is how incredibly hard it is to hire good people, to get good people to come here. And if you want a well-run town, then you need qualified, competent, hardworking people who are here. And not that we don't have some, we do. We're, we have some, we're very lucky in some ways. But when we went looking for town administrators or planners or building officials, or you pick what we've gone out to in the last three years, we have not been overwhelmed with great applications by any stretch of the imagination. In some cases, we are lucky, there might be one good person, but, you know, that was sort of it. So just looking, you know, our building official salary is set at, projected to be $70,000.
Not enough.
It's not enough. It isn't. And Portsmouth, if we're going to compare, you know, their building official makes $80,000 a year. So, you know, one question I have, we've been trying to hire a building official now for how long? I don't know that this salary is going to get us a building official. I just, I don't think it's going to happen. I don't think we can keep paying so far below the rest of the market and think we're going to get people to apply. And it's a hard job here because we're not, we're not at build-out. We're not at a point as a community where, oh, there's not a whole lot going on, I got to go inspect a few houses this week, or somebody's putting on an addition. I mean, we've got a lot going on here. So it's, it's a busy job, and it's going to take somebody with, to do it well with some real motivation and somebody who's willing to work hard. And that's a pretty low salary on a relative basis compared to other communities that have the same work level.
Have we had any applications?
No.
No.
How long have we not had one?
We haven't had one in, oh, God.
Many months.
Six, seven months, maybe?
Months.
Yeah, and we've advertised at least twice or three times.
Right. And so in the meantime, we have this interim arrangement, which is not so interim anymore.
Which is not, which is not working for our budget.
It's not really working for our budget ultimately, and it's not an ideal way to serve the public, actually, that we have here. So it would be great if we could hire a true, you know, building official that's dedicated to this town. And I didn't quite know what to do when I put the first request together, but since then, I've been told repeatedly by several people that there is no way, you know, you're going to get candidates for this salary. And part of that is the market, it's just that. And in Rhode Island, the lack of candidates for this particular position. We're competing with a lot of other towns. It's just something that I do think is a concern. Will we be able to get candidates? And if not, how much longer are we, you know, doing this interim arrangement? I actually, literally, when you were talking about my salary, I say, you're better off taking that money and giving it to the building official, because at least you pull it up a little bit. And that particular salary would need to be pulled up, I have to agree with that.
All right, well, we could do that, but...
Is, I mean, I'm sorry.
I'm just a little concerned that everything is, well, we want that money. And at some point, we have to consider how the taxpayers are going to pay for all that. And how are we going to exchange what we want with maybe we have to do without on some things? And I don't know, it just goes up and up and up. You have to consider the financial health of the community as a whole and the impact of the town spending on the taxpayer. And I don't know where that comes in, but all I hear is, well, I want that money. And that's nice, but it's coming out of people's pockets. And if you take their money, they can't live in their own house, or they can't buy food or whatever's going on, because they're not getting the increase that's going on here. And I understand, you know, you need a building official, but you're just talking about the salary, you're not talking about the benefits. The benefits in the salary, if you increase it to $80,000, you're talking about $140,000 for the building official. We never seem to talk or marry the two, the benefits and the cost of the salary. Now, I know we need these things, but on a whole, what are, what's more important than the other? Because at some point, it's just too much for the taxpayer to bear. So there has to be, there has to be some really hard thinking about all the spending that's going on here. If you feel like legal's really, you know, you want to spend all that, and you want the building inspector, and you want this, that's all I've heard so far. I can't do without this, and I can't do without that. At some point, someone's going to do without something, it's going to be someone in their own home. And maybe they don't have cable now, or maybe they can't afford their mortgage. Maybe the senior citizen has to leave town. I'm just trying to find the middle ground here because that's all I hear is, well, I don't want to do without this, and I don't want to do without that, and I want to be with this league, and I want to be, I hear it all. But at some point, where is it too expensive for people to even stay in their own home?
Rob, I just want to make something clear. Rob, I just wanna make something clear, I'm not saying I want any of this, I'm saying the town needs this, and if you look at what I wanna increase it to, it's not, like, I'm not talking a lot of money, but you have to keep in mind that without a building inspector, we're going to have problems, we're going to have ordinance break, broken, we're gonna have lawsuits again, but the thing is, we have spent, year-to-date, on a building inspector, eighty-four thousand dollars, and this is as of January, so we are hiring this agency to do this, and we are not hiring a permanent building inspector, which Jan is saying that this agency, it's just a temporary fix it, the point we did it, but keep in mind, guys, this is as of January 31st, we've spent eighty-four thousand dollars. So what I'm trying to say is, by the time June comes, it's gonna be well over a hundred thousand, and so what I'm, so what we are saying, so why don't we get a reasonable salary instead of spending this kind of money we're spending, 'cause we're pulling from all kind of accounts to get that, that was zero a couple of months ago.
I hear what you're saying, Denise, and I understand.
But we need, every town needs a building inspector.
I know, okay, if that's, you know, what we need to spend the money on, and we need to compromise on, where can we do the cuts, because all I hear is, well, not only do we need that, but we need more money.
Well, Justin, Justin did do some cuts that I do agree with, there are cuts in this budget, I have, that I do agree with, and he convinced me one was the right one before, this is just my question, like, on the election account, when he gave me his logic, and Nancy gave me what it costs, I agree with that, so that's a cut there, that's a twenty-five-thousand-dollar cut there, which, which, which Justin made, Justin has done some, right, Justin? There are cuts in this budget.
Yeah, I wanna point out, though, that just for clarity, I'm not making a point, I'm not taking a position either way on the building official salary, but, but when you say we've spent eighty-four thousand, the contractor doesn't get any benefits, so there is, it is a closer equation than it would seem, just salary versus-
Right, but I bet you we're getting to the point that we're gonna, we're gonna go over that.
Even if, even if that line gets up to a hundred twenty, how that equates to the salary plus the benefits is a question.
Well, I think the treasurer's here, so what would you, I'm asking a very, very quick question, what do you think the benefits for building inspector, yeah? She probably knows this off the top of her head, that's funny. Okay, so if you, so it's sixty-nine plus twenty-six, so it's ninety-six, we're gonna go over that, we, it's January, and we've already gone over, we're already at eighty-five. Yes. I just think a town, well, I don't think, a town has to have a building official, guys, so I think we need to do it the most cost-efficient, and it's not something that I want, but the current thing we're doing now is not a solution.
I am, I am just trying to point out that we've so far, it's, and I have, I don't have a problem with the building official, but as we go along, it's like, nobody wants to cut anything, and where are we going with this?
But this budget is cut, but this budget is cut, but what I'm, I'm just pointing this out, I haven't made a motion on any of these yet.
No, it's just a discussion.
I probably will, but, but I'm just pointing out where, where I think that we're gonna run into problems, that's all, and if you all don't agree, that's absolutely fine, I need two or three more people to agree with me, so.
No, I, no, I'd like us all to agree and come to a, I really do, but I have a friend that couldn't stay, he wasn't feeling well, but he had a few thoughts, and I've just, if you don't mind, it was thought Ekri, it was Sherri's husband, and some of his concerns were-
This is on this page, though?
The average- I just wanna say that at a minimal inflation rate of 1.6% over the last dozen years, the income has barely kept pace with household basic spending needs, and with, however, these things like medical costs, insurance costs have outpaced inflation, and have had an impact, those in need are the most, those on fixed incomes, twenty-five to thirty percent of the Tiverton residents are retirement age, these people are on fixed incomes, who Medicare costs have taken any and all income increases, have not been able to keep pace with inflation. In addition, many of the elderly own a home, which are paid off as simply increase in value, but who carry a significant chunk of our town's revenue burden, so I'm just asking everyone to be cognizant of people that aren't making a lot of money, and then because the taxes keep going up, finally, they're in real trouble. That's all, thank you.
So, I just like to respond a little to Donna's comments, and I am not at all unsympathetic, and I do realize that we have a larger elderly population, and I actually got fairly educated on it when I was on the Community Comprehensive Plan Committee, 'cause I had to update all the housing statistics, and I was really rather stupefied to find out how many elderly residents we have in our own town who own their own homes and don't have mortgages, but are still paying a huge percentage of their available income towards housing costs, so, and that includes things like property taxes, I'm not unsympathetic to that, but, you know, there is one thing that I think that people need to understand here, and I did this not too long ago, it's just a bit of an experiment, which is this idea that the town of Tiverton just blindly spends exorbitant amounts of money, right, that it's just spending, and it's just spending, and we can just cut our way out of, out of whatever our problems are, so I decided to go and look at, you know, just the four, actually the East Bay communities, and of all of them, we spend less per capita than anybody else. So, on a per capita basis, for example, we spend about thirty-two hundred dollars a year per capita, per person in Tiverton, including the schools, Portsmouth spends thirty-six-hundred dollars a year, Middletown spends forty-five hundred dollars a year per person, and even Little Compton spends more than we do, they spend four thousand dollars a year per person, so we're not on a, on a per-person basis in Tiverton, spending a lot of money, we spend less than Bristol, we spend less than Warren, we're not spending a lot of money, so, yes, it's money, but, but it's not like we're, you know, these, this big freewheeling spending organization here, so I think that spending is part of the equation, and I'm not promoting the idea that we just spend unlimited amounts of money, but it's only, in my opinion, part of the fiscal equation, it's one part, but, but it can't be the only thing, and we're not gonna be able to cut our way into a solution all the time, there have to be other things, and in some cases, those things are gonna involve, have to involve having the right people in place to do the things that we wanna do. Part of the reason those other communities can do that is that their property valuations are so much larger than, than ours are, that's, that's a big reason why they can have, spend more per person and have a lower tax rate, because their property valuations are so high. Well, you know, we talk about things like our waterfront, or improving our waterfront, or being able to generate more income from the waterfront, or, you know, preserving what we have that's valuable to help maintain property values, well, you know, to do that, we've gotta have good people in the land use department, you know, who are motivated and can work hard and feel like they're being compensated fairly. If, if we don't, all we're doing is trying to just cut our way out of this, and I don't think that that's gonna work.
Well, I thought one of the things you said, Tricia, was that they have a bigger tax rate or higher evaluations or more people there, to try to catch up with something you can't afford, doesn't make it affordable to the people in Tiverton, trying to be either Middletown or Portsmouth, I know it makes it a little tough, but if that's the case, that we wanna be in parity with other towns and attract, like, a building inspector, and they'll, we'll have one here almost the same price, you have to look through the budget and go, well, where are we going to, what is it that we absolutely need, and what is it that is just something that, you know, we think we need, or, you know, it could be maybe put off, or, I mean, we just need to look through the whole thing, but so far, and I'm not against the argument that you have, and I'm certainly not against having good people here, but so far, it's been, well, I want all these expenses, if these couple of pages are where we have the expenses and we totally, really need them, then where can we have the savings in the other pages so that it makes it affordable? That's all I'm asking.
What I was trying to tell you, there are savings, though, Justin did save, I mean, I'm just trying, but.
Not to contribute overly too much to the philosophical tangent, but I wanna point out the, comparing levies across towns, I find per income is probably more helpful than per, per capita, because the wealth of a town, Portsmouth, Little Compton, generates more revenue just because people have more money and their values are higher. That aside, I do wanna point out, in case the point has been lost here, especially 'cause I, there are people who aren't happy with me about this, the budget I've proposed is actually a 1.8% increase in operating and over a 400% increase in capital expenditures, so we can talk about my cuts, but we're talking about a beginning, I just wanna make sure that doesn't get lost in the equation of our conversation, so.
Then, in that case, and I don't mean to be argumentative, but to your point, Justin, if you think that you're better off comparing, you know, with the tax levy, then the same argument applies to the tax rate, right? It's, you can't, you can't-
No, it doesn't, because they're different things, the point of the tax rate, where that's relevant is when people are looking for homes and where they wanna live, that's where the tax rate is relevant, and that's the limited capacity in which I use in my presentation, I just-
All right, let me, I'm gonna give Tricia the last word, and then let's try to charge through the line items, and we'll come back, I promise, to, because these are all really great points.
So, well, anyways, my point was, I think that, I think that we may need to reconsider the building official salary, and I actually think that, you know, there are probably a couple of other department head salaries that might be a little light, to tell you the truth, and, you know, potentially in the contingency fund or someplace, we might need to think about, or maybe we just have to, you know, transfer things that, this isn't, you know, open position that we have right now, but we may need to up our game a little bit to attract the good, qualified candidates. And the only other, the only other question that I have about this, and I'll wait a little bit till we get to the capital improvement, which is on the IT consulting services, several of the other departments have some funding in here for software or IT services, so I'm a little confused that, I just wanna make sure we're not-
Double charging.
-overfunding or double-funding IT services, because it, they're, they're kind of every place.
It is confusing.
And it's a little, and it might all be legitimate, so that's, that, you know, that's kind of one thing, which if Jan wants to answer, and then I have one more question about this page.
I'd love to answer that, and I hope it is legitimate, what we have done is trying to consolidate in this account under the town administrator, most if not all of the IT services that have to do with equipment and software that we all use for general government operations. In addition to that, we have some departments who have very specific software that they need for their specific operations, and I'm thinking of tax assessor, treasurer, police and fire, for example, so it's, it's more, almost like proprietary in the sense of only those departments have that, and we thought it made more sense to actually allocate it to those, still allocate it to those departments for that type of IT expenditure, so that's the difference, you will, I think, see, you know, less, but the other thing is, a lot of it was hidden previously, you couldn't always tell where IT was being paid from, so I've tried to make it just a little bit more transparent in that sense, what you now see in departments are truly the very special software that that particular department needs, or it cannot do its job, essentially, and what you see under the town administrator is the more general services that we need to do the troubleshooting, to do the planning for when equipment needs to be replaced, to do the recommendations for what we need and when we need it, all of that.
And then, Tricia, I actually went through everything, the IT services that's on the capital came to thirty-six thousand dollars, and then I went through each department, anyway, it totaled up to one hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars, plus the thirty-six thousand. I went through each department, I started, I added, added it all up, and it came to one hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. Anyone that had computer software, everyone's got, you know, special software, computerized payroll for the treasurer is kinda hefty, but, I mean, she has to have that, but, but it has to be noted in the IT and software, and then professional tech services, a hundred and fifty dollars just for the tax assessor, I thought we had tech services, I just had questions, you've got board of canvases, a thousand, planning board, twelve thousand, town-wide internet services, three thousand, web support, twenty-four fifty, IT consulting was twenty-five thousand, professional tech services from eleven forty was three thousand, software maintenance went from two thousand to forty-four hundred, a hundred and twenty percent increase, probate, program software, three hundred dollars, tax assessor, he's got the GIS, web hosting and the update, two hundred and fifty thousand, eight hundred, tech services, a hundred and fifty, software maintenance, six hundred and fifty, sixty-five hundred dollars, treasurer's computerized payroll is nineteen-five, software maintenance, three thousand, tax collector maintenance for their software is forty-seven hundred, software maintenance for fires is six thousand, was put in for, but the actual is forty-four oh eight, software for police, twenty thousand, but the actual was nineteen-six forty-nine, and the town administrator put in for twenty-six thousand, might be for the new program, that's, that's a thirty percent increase, municipal software maintenance is six thousand dollars, harbor master, new computer software, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's a hundred percent increase, DPW IT software hardware, five thousand dollars, senior center, my senior center, I think that's a computer program, twelve hundred dollars, and that's what I did, it just seemed all over the place, I was like, how much is this costing?
May I comment on that? The answer is it's costing a lot, now why is that?
Because that's what it costs, I just didn't know.
No, it's because we're in two thousand nineteen, and unfortunately, or fortunately, computers and computer systems and networks and software are part of our infrastructure without which we cannot do the job, it actually helps us, for better or worse, save on personnel, because if we use, if we have the right equipment and the right software systems, it allows us to be more productive with fewer people, and believe it or not, in this day and age, spending on IT is actually the more cost-effective way than to only say, well, it's an awful lot of money, yes, it's an awful lot of money, but we need to look at what it's being used for, and I do think you threw in a few things, like the planning board, twelve thousand, that is not IT services, that is professional engineering services to assist the planning board and the zoning board with a consulting engineer, so we need to be careful what we lump together here, but I don't deny for a minute, you know, that this is a significant, although frankly, yes, it adds up. yes, it adds up, but in my mind, that's actually not a lot of money for what you need to maintain here in order to run. And let me give you a couple of other examples. So, in the building office, we've instituted e-permitting. That has an incredibly positive response from the people who need to use the building office because it allows them to apply online, they don't have to come in, they don't have to wait in line, things like that. A lot of things get filled in automatically. That interim allows us to, you know, whittle down the waiting time that we have here for people in the building office, is one example. The harbor master, it's actually a very small amount, but for that small amount, you get a system where you now electronically can manage the mooring services, which now is, I hate to say it, a little bit of a disaster in terms of how the paperwork is being done, the records are being kept, and it's an awful lot of work for a very part-time person to do and to do right, and we have crazy waiting times for people who just don't understand why they're not getting serviced a little bit more efficiently. And so, for very little money, you can build a system that does a lot of the work for you, and you can provide better services, instead of having to say, we need to hire someone else as an administrative assistant or something else. The part-time harbor master can do that job now, but with the software, it becomes more feasible to do it right.
And this, thank you, so, and this funds the, the emergency as well that we addressed? Okay.
Yes.
So, I, I think.
And one other thing, if I may, just, just add to that, the overall amount, there is a significant amount in the capital budget, and I have explained it before, but let me just quickly do it again. That envisions that we do for the rest of town government what we have done for police and fire, in terms of moving to a better platform that is less equipment expensive on-site, less maintenance cost for us, more capacity, more reliability, it's the cloud-based system, you go to Microsoft Office subscriptions, and we're all becoming a little bit more compatible than we currently are, because currently, every little part of town government has its own thing sometimes. That was absolutely necessary when everything just went kaput in police and fire, and that was an emergency because they're public safety agencies. But we have similar problems in the rest of town government, so planning to do the same kind of shift and upgrade, in my mind, is a necessary thing, and if you do it proactively, you're probably going to save a ton of money instead of having to jump in when something breaks down and the whole computer system is no longer working, et cetera, et cetera. So, I do think it's important to do that. Whether it all needs to be done in FY '20 can be discussed, maybe we can phase it. But what I thought is, it is a large project, actually. If you do it piece by piece, it's not a project. If you undertake it as, let's get this done, so we're actually, you know, working in, in the 21st century with the equipment and the technology that is available, it becomes a capital project and you can fund it as such, and because we have the opportunity to use some new revenue, I thought it was the proper way to, to budget it now. But you could talk about, you know, can this be phased? I mean, Justin, I think, cut it in half, which shocked me, but on the other hand, maybe we can do it. I already asked the, the IT consultant, you know, what, what can we do first in FY '20 and then maybe do the rest in FY '21, something like that. So, certainly open to discussion.
Well, I mean, we're skipping pages, but I'll just address that real quick. That was my thinking mainly was looking at, especially the capital budget, there, even with the things I took out, there, there's a lot on the town's plate and your plate, and I thought, given that, maybe do a big part of the IT upgrade in one year, see how it goes, learn some lessons, and then finish it the next year or something, that was along with my thinking now.
Although, I will say that, you know, we learned a lesson with police and fire, and I actually wanted to take advantage of that and not let a whole lot of time go by because we learned exactly what can go wrong and why it went wrong, and so applying that sooner rather than later to the rest makes a lot of sense as well.
So, that, that.
You have one more on page three?
Yeah, so that answers my question, and I just wanted to make sure that this was, I, I mean, I realize that everybody's got their own proprietary software that works with whatever department, I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't a double thing. And my last question for the planning board for the professional technical services, that's the consulting engineer. Given that we're going out to bid for this and given the new, you know, what was it, amount per meeting that steer wanted?
500.
500 a meeting, is $12,000 going to get us a consulting engineer?
I'm not sure. I, I'm, you know, you can calculate it a few ways, it's, it's more than we currently, well, we haven't really budgeted this particular one. I think it's probably doable, I actually talked with, I believe, the current consulting engineer as well, what their expectations were in terms of how much more, you know, is there hasn't been an increase in the amount of time that they need to spend on the jobs? It could, it could be very tight. On the other hand, it's a lot more than we have, and when I first proposed it, we were largely focused on the planning board, you know, and then it was pointed out that the zoning board really needs the same kind of assistance, and then I said, I'm going to leave this alone because we may well need it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay. I promise we will accelerate. Page four. Tony funds the request, any questions on page four?
The only thing I want to mention is, there's a lot of absentee salaries on this page that we have no increase, that refers to where we're going to put that increase, okay, that's all. That helps savings account, that's based on increase, no, never mind, I answer my question at all.
All right.
I have a question.
I have one on the tax collector, it's a 10% raise.
Yes.
She works 25 hours, I looked at her benefits and she's getting, if I'm correct, full benefits, a part-time job. I think she gets $25,43 an hour, I think the town of Tivon has been very generous to her, that a part-time position is getting full benefits, and.
Denise says no.
Who says no?
Denise.
Denise is saying no?
Yeah.
I was looking at the contract. Okay, so she doesn't? Okay, so it's just strictly, well, she has a contract, it has it all in there, is there something wrong with the contract?
Pension, vacation, it's all there.
Holidays, sick time.
Well, those are benefits, right? Are they full-time benefits?
Well, are they prorated?
They're prorated.
It seems to be listing all of them, doesn't say prorated. Is there any way to check that, Justin? I don't have a computer.
Right, the cost is probably.
If I may, because here, too, I think I, or at least in my backup document on this particular item, there is some explanation of why there is this increase.
Right, you saw that.
And I think it's an important one, which is that if you look at how, when you convert these salaries to hourly rates, there is a significant discrepancy between the salary earned in this position compared to other department heads, and I always think it's somewhat dangerous to allow that sort of discrepancy to occur. I don't know if I need to be more blunt about that, but I'll just leave it at that.
We understood, I think Donna was just concerned, because her, her review of the contract seemed to be that unlike other part-time people, it looked like she was getting.
It's true that, you know, often we hire people part-time with the understanding that as long as it's less than 20 hours a week, we don't pay benefits. So, that is true, and there is, that's, you know, we have several part-time people without benefits. This is not the case here, it goes back for some time, it was decided at the time, I believe, that it was good for both the employee and for the town to have this be a part-time position, but it was negotiated at the time, that, you know, that would work if, as long as there were some benefits, not the full package necessarily. Even so, I think that, and I, I didn't try to come up with a way to make this hourly rate exactly the same as like the highest salary of any department, to the contrary, it's still at the, at the bottom, and this is only the first step in the right direction, frankly, you know, this, this doesn't get to the lowest, to the rate of the lowest-paid department director by any means.
Did you?
So, I might.
Did you see the contract, is it?
Yes.
This is another one where we're talking about sort of compensation analysis, and I think the, the goal, right, is to move towards, you know, there's only so much time, but I think normally when you have conversations like this and you're talking about what's the compensation rate, there's usually, there are four categories that you're, you're talking about, right? If you're, if you're, if we're thinking like an HR department would, right, we're thinking about, you know, what is, what is the market, right? What is the market rate? And what is cost of living increase? And what is the person's experience and performance level? Maybe they're right out of college versus 40 years on the job, and, and then what adjustments are there to their, to their scope of duties? And so, in a, in a, in a, in a perfect scenario, when we'd ask for an increase, and perhaps we should be looking at all of them, because perhaps some of them are, are over-market, right? I mean, maybe, maybe that's the case, and perhaps the goal should be, over time, to look at the whole management team and do an analysis based on those four things, which takes time, and I'm not suggesting you need to do that, but I hope we all can agree that that's a, a framework that we'd like to strive towards, one more traditional HR-type compensation analysis.
But just how to be asked, that's all.
Yeah.
Well, I, I do have to say, I mean, it's a, it's a 10% increase, and if you look at the, the state office municipal finance, there are two other part-time tax collectors who make less than currently we pay, and then there are a bunch that don't have a tax collector, it's folded into another office presumably. So, I mean, it is, it is a substantial increase in a single year for an employee that's already here, and I noticed in your backup materials, you say typically works 30 hours, the contract says 25 on that one. I mean, I left it alone in my proposal, but it does seem like it needs a little bit more justification to go that much. I mean, I, I'm not sure I, I agree with the notion of comparing department heads per se, right, because they all do different work and have different experience, expertise, and different.
Well, there's, there's quite a bit of, you know, diversity in terms of the exact levels of compensation, it's not as if they're all at exactly the same level. What I found was a discrepancy that goes way beyond that variation among department heads. And I will say, not that I really wanted to, but there is an issue of gender equality as well, that needs to be considered in my opinion.
Okay, so I'm going to move us to page six, is that okay? All right. So, page six is, is a very interesting page because it, it sets up a new account, which would begin to expressly start a reserve trust fund to begin to address the OPEB liability. The proposal that you, that is on the table would fund it at $100,000, which is less than the administrator's starting point, but I'd like to say, because we've put a lot of time, and I think it's a council priority, that just getting it funded is, is a very important, I think, first step to at least acknowledging that it's there and it doesn't slip from people's memory year over year. That's just a comment, I don't particularly have a problem with it being at the level it is because it's a, it's a first step, and I think that's the most important step.
My concern, just, I don't know how to, the, the amount that we're behind is so huge that I can't imagine what amount we would have to contribute to be able to meet our obligations, and so at some point, I think we're going to have to, this, I don't know what the answer is going to be, the state's going to have to figure something out because this unfund, unfun, unfunded liability is just so mammoth. So, that being, on the other hand, you know, we did, we've made it a point in negotiations to have people contribute, so I don't want to not contribute, but, and I guess I basically am all right with $100,000, I just, I, it's sort of more symbolic than solving a problem as far as I'm concerned.
Any other comments on page six?
Well, I just wanted to, my rationale on the OPEB was, was exactly that, I mean, as I suggested, after, after this budget session's over, not today, I mean, in May, and we can start really putting a lot of these issues on a table and answer for ourselves, how much do we want to put toward OPEB if, if it's hopeless, or maybe we want to put more or less? I just see 300 was a lot, 300,000 was a lot to put for it before having had that conversation, whereas the 100 seemed reasonable because we did, in our police negotiations, ask them to have an employee contribution, and it seemed like a good, we do recognize this is a problem, so we're going to put, you know, $100,000 in a $54 million budget, isn't a lot, but it is still a good chunk of money.
How much are we trying to make up for?
Something, well, the town's portion was what, 17 million?
Yeah.
So, it is, as Nancy said, largely symbolic, but it's, it's something particularly because we've been asking employees to consider contributing.
I don't know, I, I just don't agree with it, it's like good money after bad, it's like, and I, I know what everybody's saying, but what's it going to do? I mean, all it's doing is it's, it's affecting the levy, it's, it's not touching anything really, it's $17 million, nobody's paid into it, and now, fast forward, we've got to deal with it, and I don't know, I guess they just didn't bother with it. Now, we've got $100,000 that we could use on IT or something like that, and we're putting it into a fund to look like we're doing something for $17 million. It just doesn't make any sense to me.
I might just add, I don't disagree with, with that, but one of the key benefits of the police contract, which was just approved, not only did it, and, and I think we're all very grateful for the, the contribution of the police union as well as our negotiation team, has a modest contribution from the, the police staff, but it also began, and we, you know, we didn't engage a formal actuary, so I, but, you know, by back of the envelope numbers, it should reflect a significant decrease in bending the curve of, of the, of the OPEB from climbing, and I think that would, potentially could have even been a seven-figure change over time, and, so I, I almost, I almost see this a little bit like our tax rate instrument that used to go up 8%, 7% year over year, and that curve has bent down, although we're still quite high compared to our neighbors, but at least the curve is, is bending closer. So, I don't see the, the OPEB as, as certainly something we can resolve today, but someone's got to start, and I think there's been good work done there.
If I may just add one other thing to this, which I think is important, this is not the town owns, own OPEB fund, as if this fund is going to solve the problem for the town. It's participating in the trust fund that the inter-local risk management trust administers, and by doing that, you participate again in a much larger pool that is being invested and actually earns money, which we cannot do at close to the same rate if we do things on our own. So, even the symbolic gesture has some benefit in that regard.
Are we a part of the trust already?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
We are, so.
There's no, they're not imposing a minimum, we're just putting money into it, they invest as a pool, is that how it works?
Correct.
So, it's not like the state where they dictate your, your state pension.
They try to dictate everything, you know, you know that, you don't trust them anyway, so.
I think the state's going to have to, that's anonymous, but.
Okay, so, good points all, page six is closed for the moment.
Oh, no, I have a thing on page six, so.
He did try, but.
So, so page six on the fire department, and again, hopefully we don't end up in arbitration, but.
but either way, there's nothing in here for second year, whatever the second year of the contract ends up with, if we end up with a contract, and not in binding arbitration. I mean, there's no, there's...
Not in the salary account.
No.
And we can't really talk about it in detail right now, but that may be okay.
Well, it may is a, may is a good thing, but I, I think that there, again, I mean...
I'm not saying that, that we shouldn't have the money in the contingency account, 'cause it was put there for that, that reason.
Right.
So that's still a debate of whether we still need it in FY20 in the contingency account.
Right. Because, because this would have to cover whatever year two is of the contract.
If there is, if the contract provides for an increase.
If, if there's a contract, and if there's an increase, it's, it's gonna have to cover year two. So, there's nothing here. It's a little...
We might not need, yeah. We don't know what we need there.
Right. But it's a little worrisome not to have anything just in case.
No, it was one of the reasons why there is a higher amount requested in my request.
In the contingency account.
Right.
Right.
But again, that, we had that debate earlier, so...
Okay.
Page seven?
Yep.
Okay.
Same thing, though.
Yeah, page seven, we do know that the second year is 3%. Correct?
Yeah, and that's not in here.
And it doesn't reflect at all in these salaries. Because we, we signed that.
Just, well, at least when I was finalizing this Friday, it still hadn't, I don't think the, the union had finished whatever they have to do, or it wasn't completely, completely done.
It's done, isn't it? That was we, we signed it, we...
I, I think where we are is ratified by the union membership, was ratified by the town council, so the attorneys for both sides can now finalize the contract, which then...
What they're doing is they're writing up the big formal one, and then...
Right. And that comes back for, you know, the final approval and signature.
Yeah, I'm just concerned, 'cause we gave them a 3% raise, and it did not reflect.
And that is the question, at what, at what point do you put that in the budget? You know, it's either now, or...
Or it better be before May.
It better be, yes.
Well, yeah, I, I mean...
Because then you're gonna have to find 3%.
But, you know, it, it also works both ways, because there is money in the current year fiscal...
Yeah, but that's for, that's for retroactive for this year.
Right.
For this year.
Which is 2%.
Right.
So we're gonna take that out of contingency. So what this is, like, we...
Needs to go, I mean, we have to put this in the budget.
It's pretty much final, I mean, I've done this some time.
It has to be in the budget.
Both sides ratified, and both sides agreed on it, so all we're waiting for is the formal contract, to make sure that it's exactly what we all said. I don't think the 3% is gonna change, I mean, we all TA'd that. So, I, I'm just, at some point, that has to be adjusted, because it will be short by, by quite a bit.
Mm-hmm.
35. Yeah, I know, but where are you gonna find 35, you don't have...
Do you think this is interesting, we should probably, the police, sounds like that is final, so that, but I'm not persuaded that, I mean, I think, I think there's a position to be said, that this idea that we will always budget for retroactive raises strikes me as...
No, 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 it's not retroactive.
So, I mean, I, I think there needs to be an incentive, that, you know, you, you make a deal, and, and you do it faster than later, and so I think police is good to go, but I'm just pondering some of these other contracts that...
Oh, okay.
Are not finalized, or maybe going into negotiation, and I think we maybe need to all create a little more sense of urgency here, because maybe we shouldn't be setting this aside for these retroactive, I, I don't know that that's the way it should be done.
Well, I don't know if it would be retroactive, because, because the other two expire in June, and we could be very successful and have a contract by July.
Maybe the default just sits, it just sits on what it was, till the new...
Or, or we should be negotiating those before the expiration, kind of gets like the department contracts, instead of waiting and waiting, and then...
I think it's fair to say that that was the goal.
Yeah.
And I hate to go into the details of the factors that can work against you.
Yeah, I understand.
I just, I, I will articulate my position that retroactive raises are off the table on day one, and everybody has to have it negotiated by the time it's...
Right, but this isn't retroactive.
I know, not this one, I'm just saying, while that's our conversation, I wanted to make that clear.
Okay. Now, also, and just as a note, the electricity on this page, probably spent 80% at the time of the contract, so I think our electricity funds, we're gonna be putting money in there.
Okay. I'm, I'm just one person, but I make a mindless list of proposed adjustments, and I've just put, I think the police is one we may want to talk about. Just me. All right, we're on to page eight. Hearing nothing.
No.
I can always count on you.
No, I don't, sorry, I don't have anything on eight, I was confused.
Okay. All right, no, just spinning around. Page nine?
I have a nine.
All right, yes.
So, on the Harbor Master Boat Operations, is the Harbor Master going to have a boat?
I'm glad you asked that. He has a boat, but you can't take it out on the water, 'cause the motors are not working.
Right.
And so initially, the, I didn't know that it already had reached that point, and I initially proposed putting money in FY20 capital budget to pay for two new motors for that boat. But then it occurred to me with more information that that would mean another season without the Harbor Master actually being able to go out on the water. So we're currently looking at finding, actually, we think we have found a way to fund that in the current fiscal year, apply the balance that's, or almost the balance that's in the Boat Operations account to that, to, to lower what needs to be taken out of the other account, which would be the Capital, Capital Reserve account.
Yeah.
Which is a very appropriate account, if you have to use an account, it's, it's meant for that kind of a, a purchase. But that would then obviously obviate the need to budget that 40,000 plus in FY20. That's the idea currently. The Harbor Master is cautiously happy.
Okay.
And drainage and paving has been moved to capital?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Because I got a little nervous when I saw zero there.
Yeah.
And I saw it in capital, so, okay. But is, nevermind.
Okay, page 10.
Just as a typo note, the operations total for Public Works operating expenses, I hadn't adjusted that for the removing the stuff for capital, so that should be 35150. It's right in the grand total, but on that subtotal, operations total.
Okay.
Yeah, 35150.
Where's that, Justin? I'm sorry.
Page 10, first line that says operations total. Not the first line, but the line that says oper...
It's before street lighting.
It says 685150, that should be 35150, just 'cause I moved it to capital, and I didn't change the subtotal.
Honestly, can we talk about that?
No, it's just, this is just a typo. It doesn't roll into the bottom lines.
Oh, look at that.
Okay, so I'm over to page 11, am I, am I jumping ahead here?
I do have one question on page 11. I'm just curious, and, and, you know, I realize the amount's a little big, but the Historical Preservation Advisory Board asked for funds, and they didn't get anything.
Oh, I have some information on that. If I, if I may, I'll, I'll just explain where it came from. First of all, it's a new request.
Right.
Hasn't been budgeted before. Secondly, the request was for $5,000, and I put in 2,500. What the money is meant for is to purchase the signs for the historic districts that we have, and I think they are, if I'm not mistaken, cost at 1,200 apiece, something like that. I think we have two of them in town, if I'm not mistaken. I don't think Sue Anderson is here. But anyway, that's what it was meant for, and my...
I, I need to...
I'm not...
As soon as you're done.
Okay, I'll, I'll try to hurry up.
No, I'm just saying, they should be asking for it.
So I, I thought that this might be a, a good example of where we should try to get some supplemental funding from another source. I, I realize that for a new request, it's a large request, on the other hand, I also think it's something that actually benefits the town to have that kind of signage. I think there's some economic benefit, but, sorry to keep you waiting, Donna.
But I was just trying to say that they don't have any authority to ask for anything, that's the only reason why I was trying to tell you something.
I'm not sure that's true.
No, no, they're not listed anywhere. They're not listed in the charter, the board's commissions, committees, TC policy.
But they were appointed by the council.
And how is that happening? Because they're not in any group, there's no group listing on my policy. They are to serve only in an advisory role to the planning board when they are asked for advice. The statement on the request for the budget is they never had a budget, and have had a house plot program that didn't cost the town any money. What changed from advisory to just starting a project and requesting $5,000 budget? Who appro, who approved the bud, that project? There are historic district signs in Tivon and Four Corners, where did they come from? How much did they cost? These are my concern. In summary, Sue Anderson, actually, the reason I know this is because she addressed this problem with the CRC with proposal number 46. And their goal would be beneficial to the town, but they, they, I just feel they can't ask for a budget for a project that has not been approved by the planning board, because throughout her CRC proposal, she says she, they answered to the planning board, and are there to answer any questions that have to do with history. Nowhere does it say they're supposed to go off on their own and start projects and have a budget. Someone from the planning board or the town council would have to approve it if they go along with the advice from an advisory council, board. And that's what they are, they're an advisory board. So I don't know how this came about. I don't know how to help them, they didn't get in the charter, they're not in the, in the town council policy boards and commissions, so that I can even see, they're not even listed. I, I, I don't know, I, I don't think it's, that we can, under the circumstances. Who, who approved it? Who approved this plan?
It would be, by doing this, we would approve it. I'm not saying that we wouldn't approve it, this...
I'm just saying that they're an advisory role.
Right.
Can I, can I say something about that? And it may not satisfy you, but I just noticed, I was reading the Comprehensive Community Plan the other day, and it calls for a somewhat more substantive role for this particular committee in implementing some of the recommendations of that plan that was adopted, you know, through a public process. So I'm not saying that answers the question that you raised about if they're not in the charter and they're named as an advisory group, you know, should they be able to do this? But there certainly seems to be a recognition that there is a need for work to be done by a group like this in the comprehensive plan. The other thing that made it a little bit easier for me to go along with the proposal was that it's a known entity, we, we have signs like this, it serves a good purpose, I think, for, for example, you know, visitors to town and everything else, and it recognizes some of the resources that we have in town, which generally speaking, I think, has been consistent with town policy. But that's just me, and I don't have all the history that you have.
Well, if, if I may, on, the problem is, it seems like it wasn't discussed with anyone that could approve it, and all of a sudden, there's a $5,000 budget.
25,000.
That you have it, well, still, it was 5,000 they put in for, I think, under the circumstances that, I don't know, I feel that there shouldn't be any approval for this, due to the fact that we need to figure out what their role is, they need to be listed somewhere, and they need to know if they, if they're gonna be an advisory board, who will approve their, their project?
We will.
That, no one approved any project that I know of, except all of a sudden...
Well, no, but I think that's what this process is. This, this happens a lot, where people come to us and say, "Well, this is what we wanna do next year." And by putting in the budget, we've approved it. See what I'm saying, Donna? So, if we didn't like it, then we don't do it.
But they're not advisory, the ones that are coming to us aren't advisory. This specifically says advisory for historical preservation, that when the planning board needs some help...
Right, yeah, I know what they do.
So I'm not understanding how this happened. I'm, I certainly love the signs, I just think we need to take a step back and figure out where this all fits in, and how they fit into the, the whole plan. And they, they were saying they, they can't, they really don't know where they're gonna get the signs, there was a guy in Westport, I guess he's passed away, and the nice signs that they have there, they like. I think they need some more time to get a hold of what's more cost-effective for the signs, if the planning board or the town council decides to go forward with it.
I don't think it would be the planning board, it would be ours, 'cause it really is not the planning board.
But once again, you know, you can't spend your money on everything, you have to start thinking like...
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm not saying I wanna spend it, but that's where, I'm saying that's where the process is.
It might be worth the small detail, but perhaps something that's not a charter or state law-founded board, maybe moves under your budget section, or maybe the council's way. If it's truly an advisory board to the council, so there's, to answer Donna's point, there's a clear line of accountability on, but you're right, I mean, and in addition to that, there should be...
I mean, there, there's no description or what their role is, I mean, you can't find it anywhere, except that I happen to have what she wrote up. It's, it's well-written, but it is written up as advisory.
Okay, so let's, let's talk about, I'd like to talk about some of these civic appropriations. Does anybody wanna go first, or do you wanna hear mine?
Why don't you go, Rob? You haven't said anything first.
Yeah, I mean, I think that this is an interesting one, I mean, it's, there's no doubt about it, these are, these are really important organizations, and they're probably performing functions that if they did not perform, there would be a calling for others, perhaps the government to perform. I guess I'm just a little, I, I'm all about ramping down, instead of just like cliffs, and on the other hand, ramping up, kind of, you know, and I'm just wondering if, at least on the visiting nurses, if we should discuss if, if, if they really, I don't remember, 'cause what's in front of me doesn't show the historical amount, but if, if they've been receiving $5,000 for a very long time, and philosophically, we're, we're coming to a place where we feel like it's inappropriate, or, you know, to take taxpayer money and give it to private organizations, I'm not sure. But in any event, I'm wondering if that's just too big of a drop in, in one year, and so if, if that's the direction that at least a majority wants to go, 'cause I'm sure there's some disagreement on that, I'm just wondering if it's worth discussing, you know, you know, sort of easing the transitions? So that, that was, that was one, basically, that's my, my sort of general comment, so that's all I had to say. Particularly on the visiting nurses.
Yeah, I was...
Is that a longstanding spend?
Yes.
Okay.
I think it is, and I, I just wanted to check whether you've been able to read the supporting information in your binder. These folks write in, and many of them provide statistics as to, you know, the percentage of the population in our town that is being served, or the actual numbers, and as far as I know, you know, it's a very active and competent and important organization in terms of the services that it provides to people in Tivon who need that type of assistance, so, but I don't have the history of how far back this goes.
It goes way back.
Rob, I just remember, this subject came up when I was, when I was on the Budget Committee, and it started as a philosophical discussion about, is this a town's role to pick and choose charities, or should that be up to the individual taxpayer? So it started from that premise, and then I, I did some research, and the, the, what do you call it, the amount of funding, the, the visiting... The amount of funding that the visiting nurses has is huge. I mean, we're talking millions of dollars in their bank account. And so it's, and they certainly wouldn't stop serving our county, but their sitting on their balance sheet is huge. And I think East Bay community was also the same.
So they pay salaries?
So that was a decision. We opened up a discussion a couple of years ago on the budget committee. You know, our $5,000 really isn't going to be doing much of anything to help them, and it would certainly do more to help us. So that was just a background that I'll give you.
Can I ask what the source of that information is?
Their balance sheet?
Yeah.
Their webpage.
And you can also get that information from their 909 statements.
Yeah, what was it called?
990, sorry.
Yeah.
Got the Beatles in my head.
But may I ask which, because visiting nurse, VNA has chapters and subchapters and...
Yeah, but they all are under the umbrella and...
Well, no, well, no, they're not all under the same umbrella.
They're not all under the same umbrella.
What does Newport County have?
Or whoever we're...
I believe I looked up Newport County. I believed, I looked up the one that serves Tiverton. But this was a couple of years ago. I can't imagine. I'm just giving you some history.
Just same question on the Conservation District. Is that one that's been sort of had a budget, but we didn't spend, or does this have a long history of?
Which one, Rob?
I don't know how long the history is, but I do know it's an organization that...
Yes, it was last year.
Basically gives us access to other sources of funding, in particular, the Department of Agriculture, Natural Resources Conservation Service program that provides grants and technical assistance and what have you. It's a program that initially was largely, if not only, focused on farmers and agriculture and has gone beyond that to more general conservation practices and more than some other environmental organizations, is able to communicate effectively with farmers who typically don't like a lot of interference. And so I think some of the backup information suggests as well, although I have some questions about it, that they actually do, the money that you invest, you get it back multiple times through those kinds of grant programs and projects that they do. That's the justification that I know about it. I've been involved in funding it in another town as well. I think it's a strong organization that provides helpful assistance to a town.
Now, the, oh, go ahead, we're still talking about that.
Well, I was just going to also, about the Eastern Rhode Island Conservation District, they have been extraordinarily helpful to us, particularly in addition to all those other programs, in helping us sort through the abuses in the farm, forest, and open space program, which was a program that is, provides for a significantly reduced tax rate for legitimate farms. But because it's sort of administered, or you're enrolled in the program through DEM, we'd reached a point where we had quite a few SCOFF laws who were paying a lot less in property taxes than they should have, because somehow they'd gotten themselves enrolled in the Farm, Forest, and Open Space Act. And Eastern Rhode Island Conservation wasn't for that idea either. This is, it's a great program for legitimate farmers. So they've been very helpful to us in helping to sort out who correctly belongs in that program and who might not, and helping the truly legitimate farmers get the correct documentation so that they can stay in the program. And they have a certain amount of street credibility with DEM, so if the tax assessor doesn't think this property belongs in the farm program, and neither does Eastern Rhode Island Conservation, it's been helpful to us. So they've done a really great job in the last couple of years of helping to get that program to be helping the people it's supposed to be, and not people who just want to find a way to not pay their property taxes.
Yeah, I'll turn on this one. This is one I'll say, the Eastern Rhode Island Conservation District, I had slipped my mind, but in the past, I had argued that it was, it shouldn't even be in this because they were more of a service provider than a charity. So I, I mean, if anybody wants to move to restore that thousand later on, as we wrap this up, I'll support that.
Now, the fire rescue community training, has anyone talked to the fire department to see what benefit?
Because I think they do...
Well, this is the program that does all the CPR training everywhere.
But I think it does the recertification, I think it does the fire department's recertification too. So the question is, if we don't have it here, how much is it going to cost to get us someplace
I just didn't know if the acting chief knew we were cutting that.
I believe you have a write-up by Tom Mello in the binder.
Yeah, where is it? Yeah, and it's in there somewhere, right?
It should be in the...
I can't find it.
No, I had that page open.
Maybe I'm getting tired. This is where...
Yeah, it is in your binder.
Yeah, there is a visiting nurses out there with, there are many of them. So I'm trying to find the Rhode Island chapter.
Newport and Bristol Counties, grocery receipts of 15 million, assets of 6 million.
Well, no, even of that, there's more than that. You got to look at the one, because there's more than one that in theory has Tiverton in its...
Well, I think this is to run the free clinic, isn't it? To like do the free flu shots, home visiting.
But it goes, we're giving it to Newport County.
Yeah, but they've come and spoken to us, I don't know if it was last year. It's to concentrate on Tiverton residents.
It doesn't get...
Well, I don't know if it's just, it's housebound, it's, it's for a free clinic, well, maybe...
I think insurance pays for it. That's what I've been told in the past.
Medicare might, if they just have Medicare, they might not pay for everything. Medicare doesn't pay for everything, so. And I know that, because I'm a healthcare professional, so that's my thing.
This is visitingnursehh.org, home and hospice.
Yeah, that's what I was looking at.
I get, one of the... One of the things we used for the budget committee was, and I don't, I don't know, who came and spoke to the budget committee and who did not, out of this list of people for civic?
That's what you did?
And the ones that did not come to speak?
I don't remember visiting nurses ever coming to the budget committee. No, I don't remember that.
Yeah, they used to come.
Not last year, Donna, when you gave them $5,000.
But one year Cecil jumped in and...
Right, and put it in there.
I guess the question, at least to me, and it's a tough question, is there's, this is actually something on my to-do list in my charity work, because I'd like to compile every single charity that services Tiverton, and I bet if you finish that task, it's going to be something in the hundreds and hundreds, when you think about everything from the Red Cross to, you know, and so, how do we, every single one of them does great work, right? So how do we think about how to allocate, how to allocate that? And it's a very, you know, there's different organizations that, you know, if you think about the combined federal campaign, for those of you that work in the federal government, there's, it roughly takes on all comers, and there's a catalog that's, you know, it's at 150 pages long or something like that, and you can allocate. It's just, it's just something that, it'd be nice if we could figure out a way, and maybe there needs to be a benchmark, where, you know, one-tenth of 1% of the budget goes to a vetting committee, and maybe that vetting committee is the budget committee, or maybe it's somebody else. But every single one of these does great work, and I find it difficult to, it's very, it's very hard to look at a list in front of you, but at the hand of it, there's hundreds of other great organizations that aren't on the list, that also have a great story to tell and are great. And so it would be, if we can strive in the future towards a framework, or where a charity fills a gap, or at least a perceived gap, of course, they all do that to some degree. It's something I think we need to keep working on. Otherwise, we'd have $20 million of charity grants, right?
Getting back to the fire rescue, I think my question is, should that be under the fire budget?
Well, I'm not sure. I actually don't see that referenced in Tom's write-up.
I can't find it.
Well, I have it right here, and I think he would have...
He's always been on this, on the civic.
Yeah, I know it has, but the more I was thinking about it...
I don't think it's training of the firefighters.
No, but it does, I think they do their cert, I think that, I think that does their recertification for their, for their CPR.
ACLS, cardiac certificates.
Which I think they have to get done regularly.
And I think they're the ones that certify, well, I think I kind of know that.
I would have expected him to mention that in here, that's all.
I don't know. Well, I think we should ask, because if we have to hire somebody to come from outside, or we have to send people a way to get this done, and it's going to cost a lot more, then we should know that.
Yeah, because I know to get recertified in ACLS, which they need, it costs me $100.
Well, I know, and that's in the budget, money to get the recertifications done. I don't think that's through this particular organization.
You don't think it's through that, okay. Oh, just asking. Now, I want to talk about parents and teachers. They came to us, right, Donna? Don't you remember them coming? One year? They're the ones that do the pre-K.
First of all, it was a grant, and then it never went on again.
Right, absolutely.
But so it's not really run that way, because they don't have all the services, because it's, it's not a grant anymore. We had to come up with the $500.
Because they didn't get the grant anymore.
Right.
Right, and they do the pre-K. You know who could answer this is, where's Sally? I know it's not under the school department anymore, but at least you could give me some background on it. Parents and teachers, I know it's not under the school department anymore. You don't know what they're doing at all at all?
I don't know. I did when they were there.
Yeah, they are active, because they took it. They took it this year. It's not there. All right.
Rob, did we talk about the onsite waste treatment thing? On page 10?
Nobody brought it up.
Oh, I wanted to talk about that one.
I'm just, I, we couldn't find any backup material, but we got it tonight. And I am sort of interested in the history. I know the big thing, what, one of the big things they do are the septic inspections and stuff for the state, correct?
It's actually for the town.
They don't do the inspections.
They don't do the inspections. They run the program that makes sure that the inspections happen and that we follow up on the results of the inspections. So actually, this was a presentation they made to the budget committee at its last meeting, and I thought it might be of interest to the council since it's a budget item.
I'm just sort of interested, because like in '15, they asked for $20,000, but I guess they didn't get it.
Well, they didn't ask, I think they got cut back from where they were before. That's the history that I saw. And then for $20,000, actually, that was restored at one point, and then the budget committee took it away again. And that was the history of that. And as I understand it from Leroy Kendricks, who made the presentation, is that for $20,000, you really, you don't get anything done, really, other than, you know, answering the phone for people who have questions about their septic systems and everything else. But not really this proactive program of following up on the inspections. And then the whole idea of this program is that you ultimately cover all of the town where it's on septic systems rather than on sewer, because the septic systems is 90% of the wastewater that's being generated.
So is there some reason now that it's ramped up, that they want almost double?
They would actually like to go back. This is, they would like a whole lot more than what is in this budget request.
A lot more.
A lot more, and they can explain why, and I think you need a presentation from them at some point. Leroy was actually asking me today, when he could be before the council, I said, well, time is running out a little bit, but this is an important program. And the other thing that must be pointed out, I think, is that we have this program in part because by participating in this program and helping to pay for it, we also make available to residents of the town this community septic system loan program. And through that program, people get financial assistance in the form of no-interest loans when they have to upgrade or replace their septic systems. So people with failing septic systems and under the law need to get rid of their cesspools and not entirely on their own, because doing that replacement or upgrading is becoming more and more expensive. So this loan program is available because the town has implemented this program, including an ordinance, including the inspection program and everything else.
Townwide inspections to be completed within six years? That was a while ago.
That was a while ago, and it's a function, frankly, of the funding, why, you know, they haven't made more progress. They're very eager to make more progress. So far, the main areas where inspections have been done are in the Stafford Pond and Anadooket Pond areas, and even there, we only have 70% of the properties actually compliant or participating so far. But all the areas of town where you have septic systems that still need to be done, and we're all behind. We still have in this town a very high percentage of cesspools operating that are by now illegal. And, you know, it's one thing to say it's illegal and you're bad, but it's another thing to provide some meaningful assistance to help people change to, you know, appropriate septic systems.
Do you know, did they make a presentation to the budget committee? Do you know?
They did, last, I just said it, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
This is, this is year three of my discussion on this. And, you know, coming from the Conservation Commission, I'm all about clean water, and I'm well aware of how dire the situation is getting with septic leakage around here in certain areas, and cesspools that, you know, need to be updated, and failed septic systems. However, I have asked the wastewater commission for the last two years, the ordinance that empowers them to do any of this is so far out of date, it's not even funny. I mean, DEM now has a more aggressive cesspool phase out than what we have in our ordinance. These inspections, and not, the wastewater district wasn't responsible then, the town was. I mean, all these inspections were supposed to be, have been done seven, eight, nine years ago, and, and before any more money is sent, and this is what I've asked for, on sending letters out to people, right, telling them that they need to do something that doesn't come with any enforcement, I keep suggesting, take a little of this money and spend it on working with the town to upgrade the ordinance. You know, now, they're responsible for the ordinance, upgrade the ordinance, come up with a plan that works, because even when we had the letters, there's a percent, there's a certain percentage of people who cooperate, right? They get their septic systems inspected. The people whose septic systems are going to fail, they just take the inspection letters and throw them in the trash. I mean, and this has been going on for years, and there's no, there's no, there's no enforcement of this, and there's no town-approved enforcement of this. We've never said to the wastewater district, listen, if somebody keeps ignoring you, we're okay with this. So, you know, on the one hand, I think we need an inspection program, but on the other hand, the underpinnings of this are old, they're outdated, they don't work, and that needs to get addressed first. The other thing I would like to know is exactly, again, and I've, we got it last year, is how many people are applying for loans and getting them through this program? Because the last two years, and maybe they need to do a better job of marketing this, that number was really tiny. So for $37,000, I'd like to see this program get overhauled.
I, well, first of all, I'm not really the one who should be answering, you know, comments like this. It should be Leroy Kendricks or the staff of the wastewater district. I have spoken with them. They'll be the first to say that it doesn't make sense to try and have an inspection program if there is no enforcement. Now, the question is, who is responsible for enforcement? We have not enabled or empowered the wastewater district to do enforcement. It doesn't have that authority, only the town does, but we haven't been doing it. That's the problem. That's the problem. We have an ordinance, and it may not be what it should be, but as it is, it requires enforcement. But we're not doing it.
Trish, this--
So that's the real problem, in my opinion. And I think it's very hard for these folks at the wastewater district to do what they're mandated to do if we don't do our enforcement piece.
Right, but there is no enforcement piece. So, right now, there's basically a fairly expensive letter-writing campaign. I mean, I'm being, listen, I believe in this, it's not that I don't, but it, we've had this for, I mean, this program, when the town owned it, had the same, when, when the wastewater department was here under our purview, it was the same program. So, you know, if insanity is doing the same thing over and over and over and over and over and over again, expecting a different result, this is kind of where we are. So, and for the last two years, I realize you weren't here, Jan, but when the wastewater district has come in front of us, I've said the same thing. You know, take some of this funding and rewrite the ordinance, and let's work together to figure out, what do we do for people who, you know, don't? How do we, how do we get people to upgrade their septic systems when they need to be upgraded? What do we do about failed systems that people just won't do anything about? Especially because the DEM has very little money for enforcement.
DEM is missing in action on this one.
They are.
It doesn't have the authority and the mandate, it doesn't have the capacity to do what it should be doing. It did develop this program with the concept being that if you spread it out over the communities, you develop more capacity to go after these problems. In some communities, that has worked exceptionally well. In some communities, it has not worked, and Tivern is one of them. Although, and they have some statistics that they presented to the Budget Committee as well, there is a fair number of people who actually are, you know, taking the step to replace these septic systems. And part of the problem there is, now you have a level playing field problem, where some people do the right thing and spend the money, even though they get financial assistance sometimes, it still is an expense on their part, and other people get away with not doing it. So that's another issue of, you know, should we be concerned with that or not? I do think that there is an ordinance. I do think that the inspections actually generate data that if we had enforcement will, in capacity, we would be able to make more change happen in terms of cesspools and failing septic systems.
Is this the ordinance dated 2015 they refer to here?
No, there's--
It's an older one?
The, the ordinance, the ordinance is, I know there's a copy of it on the wastewater district site, but the ordinance is, is from like 2003. Yeah, somewhere around then. And it hasn't been touched since then.
I do want to say this for full disclosure. They are sending letters out now, and I'm one of the ones that got it. And it's 30 days. And I've called around today, no one is going to inspect a septic with this weather. Like, they have to do a bunch of stuff, and the ground's frozen. And 30 days from now, nobody can guarantee that we're still going to have not-frozen ground. And then in 30 days, there's all these fines. Well, I called around to some people, and they agreed with me. We can't do that now.
Again, I'm not the wastewater district. I can't really answer the question, other than I'm absolutely convinced that when you have circumstances like this that make it impossible, you know, to do the work, they're going to grant you some, you know, extension.
Well, yeah.
Well, there's no doubt in my mind. I mean, they're not crazy people, either.
Well, to send a letter out--
They're not, Justin.
Well, to send a letter out on March 1st, telling people 30 days, I mean, it doesn't take--
No one's going to inspect--
It doesn't take too many rocket scientists to figure out that the ground might not be thawed out in 30 days.
I don't know if a rocket scientist would be qualified to make that.
Okay.
Well, I mean, I'm not saying that we shouldn't, I'm not saying that we shouldn't fund this. I'm just saying that I don't think that the inspection program works. And I think that we, if we're going to fund this, it should be for something that is going to work.
And I, I think that, you know, frankly, what needs to be done, if I'm not mistaken, is that the council directed me to work with the wastewater district on, you know, pursuing upgrade, updates to the ordinance, if that is in fact needed, but also to look at what we can do to get enforcement going. And that's our responsibility. It's not the district's responsibility.
Yeah, but they're by, it is there.
No, it's not. It doesn't have the authority to do it.
Right, right, but, but it's their responsibility to come to us and say, "We need a new ordinance," or--
Not necessarily. I mean, you know, we, this is not originally their mission. Their mission is to deal with sewers. And then we convince them to also administer the onsite wastewater treatment program for us, so that we wouldn't have to hire the people to do it.
That's not really, no.
Well, I think it is.
No, not, not quite, not, not quite the history here.
Well, the thing is, you know, we contracted with them to administer this program, and then we more or less washed our hands of it. And that's not working.
Well, but we didn't, I, I, okay, well, this is off-topic, but I don't think we washed our hands of it. We have approached them about doing things differently, and we're just, we're not getting anywhere.
Give us direction, and we'll try to make it happen.
Can I just ask a practical question?
Why don't we just put them on the--
What happens if we give them the 30, not the 37, the 500? I mean, practically, what, what will the difference be?
You know, you need to talk to them, okay? I can't answer those, those questions, because I don't run that organization. I don't know exactly, you know, which money is spent on what.
So they're acting as a contractor, and this is the prospective bid that they've sent us, in a sense?
Yeah. I think.
It does make me wonder if--
There's more than that they have presented, and I didn't, I didn't add everything that I, you know, got at the Budget Committee meeting. There's another sheet with some of the statistics that I asked them to generate as well.
Makes you wonder what, Rob?
I was just brainstorming that this amount of funding, since it really isn't part of the sewer district's, you know, statutory requirement, they're essentially, as I see it, a vendor in this role. I was reflecting on this comment, are we below mark on a building official? And if, if some of these funds were, if it is a town responsibility, it seems to me that would be the building official.
Code enforcement, it could be, but--
He's the code enforcement officer.
Right now, it isn't.
But aren't they--
He's one of the few law enforcement officers. Anyway, just a thought. Okay. We've been at this for two hours and 40 minutes. We're done with the detailed docket. I know we spent, well, I think, two out of our prior workshops talking about capital. So, I don't think we have a lot to debate about the revenue numbers.
You want to do motions?
Other than to say the revenue numbers have improved, so should we try to hold ourselves till 10 o'clock on capital discussion, and then let's take some votes?
Could we, you want to just do motions on this one and get this one done? Or just do the whole thing?
Well, definitely, at least in my view, if we cut somewhere, then I, you know--
Yeah, you're right.
We did spend a lot of time on capital, is there--
Yeah, we, I do--
Can I make one correction of what I said earlier? So Nancy just handed me something that indicates that, in fact, the community training center does train town employees, and that, that includes Tivern Fire and Police Personnel, library staff, et cetera, et cetera. So I stand corrected, I wanted to make sure. And Denise was right.
Wow. That Denise was right. Yeah, I think we have--
You want to talk about capital?
I have a--
I'm really trying not to hold a meeting until tomorrow.
Well, if we have to, we have to. Go ahead. Are you going to bring up, you do it first, okay.
What, on capital?
Yeah.
So, I, I have some things on capital. The, the Bay Street remediation, I don't think this belongs in capital at all. This is, this is not, this is not money for the voters to vote on, or as proven as part of the FTR. This is settlement money from a lawsuit that's restricted in purpose. And to tell you the truth, I would like to separately, and for the purposes of time, not do it in here. I would like the council to have a whole discussion, again, about Bay Street, because I remembered some things, but after the presentation the other day, I went back and did some digging. And we really need to rethink a plan for Bay Street. But I, I just don't think this belongs in the capital budget. It's not, you know, if you stick it in there, it's a, it's a kind of smoke-and-mirrors way of saying, "Look at all this money we're spending on capital." This isn't a capital expense. I think it doesn't belong in the--
Well, I just think it's a settlement.
It's a settlement, and it doesn't belong in the capital improvement budget.
Can I just comment on that, because the settlement, there's a settlement fund. There is a certain amount of money left in that. That money is set aside for A. Connell and the lower end of Judson Streets.
Yep.
It's not even enough to pay for what needs to happen there. Things that the town is responsible for under the settlement agreement. In addition to that, you have all the other streets. You have Bay Street, where we still need to work out, hopefully with DOT, what its responsibility is. There is a large project there that is associated with the necessity to install sewers. And that, as soon as the sewers, and this is the other thing. DEM has let the wastewater district wait until it was actually done with designing the sewer project and being ready to go, and therefore, also hasn't really enforced all that hard on failing septic systems and that program. That patience is, is running out. There is pressure on the wastewater district to get the sewers in the ground. As soon as that happens, the town's responsibility comes into play, because the soils underneath the roads are the town's responsibility under the settlement agreement. For better or worse, that's, that's what we're dealing with. And it's not, I think, smoke-and-mirrors. I think if you listen to that presentation--
Now, now I think we're confusing two things. I'm sorry. The discussion of Bay Street, and the responsibility, and the plan, and what we should do going forward, forget this. I was just saying that all of that, I think, needs to be a completely separate discussion with the council. Because I think that, Jan, you've heard some history on this, and, and some of what's gone on, but not all of the history behind this, separate. But what I'm saying is, so forget that part for now, just in this budget, that this $250,000 here, right? Which is coming out of the settlement fund, correct?
It can't.
It can't. And, number one, and it's not, you know, something that's in the capital budget, in theory, the voters have the right or the opportunity to approve. This isn't something, this money is legal settlement, it, it's, it's not-- I'm just saying that the whole 250 on both ends, it as a capital improvement and, and coming out of the fund ought to have come, come out of this budget. It shouldn't, it shouldn't be in here as a line item.
So, there are a few items in the capital budget. When I developed the capital budget, the idea was to identify issues in areas and projects that haven't been done for too long, that need attention. And to some extent, that has worked, that people have, you know, become more aware again of certain things that need to be done. Bay Street, I think, is now, I don't know how many years it has been that the settlement agreement was written, and we were supposed to get certain things done. And people in that area have not seen that happen, except on their own properties, for which they have their own responsibilities. So there is, I think, an issue with how much time has gone by. But what, what really, with the capital budget, there are items where I suggest that a certain amount of money is needed, knowing that there may be an offset, in some cases, from other sources. And I agree with you that it's not for this process to decide how the settlement fund should be used. That, that's a good point. But it could, in some instances, offset the work that needs to be done. For example, at A. Connell Street and Judson, so that that doesn't have to be in the town's capital budget, or you can offset it. That, that's all it says. So when I said in the first year, $250,000, and then we go up, I was looking at what I expected, and I think it's actually going to be more than what is in there, believe it or not, what we would need if we were to meet our responsibilities under the settlement agreement, taking into account when the sewer project can move forward. Because when it moves forward, our responsibility gets triggered. So I thought it was prudent to start thinking about, what is this ultimately likely to cost? And how can we spread that over a number of years? Knowing that maybe in the first year, if part of the work that's ready to go is A. Connell and Judson, that might, you know, lower the amount that we need out of the town's capital budget.
Okay, so then, so then I have two responses. One is, I think the, I, I think that it is premature, at this point, for the town to assume that we are, in and of ourselves, going to be liable for all of this remediation work.
That's my concern.
And I, I don't think, and I'm just going to give you an-- I don't want to belabor this. But there are, there are written agreements, there were discussions, there were things that happened. There's written history on this that seems to, the versions have changed. And I think that you, the council, everybody who's involved, needs to be aware of those things. This whole thing with Bay Street was not unknown to the Water District. They had an opportunity to participate in the lawsuit. The town wanted them to join in. They declined, and said, and, and they, they didn't want to participate. It was entirely known, when the wastewater district was created, this was a known issue. And the thought at the time was that, based on the funding with USDA, it would all work out. It didn't. At one point, there was a, a, a work group or committee that was supposed to be created, that had representatives from the council, representatives from North Tivern Water, representatives from wastewater, and some of the homeowners or property owners there to try and figure this out. Because there are bigger issues than, if we just build it, they'll come, we'll just fix that. That's a neighborhood where there are a lot of economic challenges. Some of those properties are frankly assessed at values that the total amount of work between connecting to the sewer, and if there's a lot of remediation, that's going to be more than what the properties are assessed for. Like, this is not easy. And, and to say, "We're just going to invest this, and at the end of the day, the wastewater district's going to have liens on all over these properties," that isn't, so, that step that was supposed to happen, where there was a, a group that was supposed to work together to try and figure out, this might be a place where actually, if we're going to try and do this, this is where you need to get federal clean water money. And, I mean, because it, it doesn't make any sense to just say, "Well, we're going to do this big investment there." And I'm not saying we shouldn't help these people, but we should have a plan that we're pretty sure is going to be successful at the end of the day. Not, "Well, we're just going to start this, and then, you know, as problems come up, we'll cross that bridge when we get to it." That's just my opinion. As, so as far as that, I don't think it's ready to go into the capital budget, number one. And number two, if this funding, the way I look at it, if this 250 is being funded out of that--
It is.
Which it is, again, it shouldn't be in the capital budget. The voters don't have the opportunity to vote to spend that money on anything else. They can't say, they can't look at this when they go into vote at the FTR and go, "Oh, I, I don't want to, I don't want to spend 200." I'm not saying we shouldn't do it.
It wasn't my proposal to take it out of the settlement fund, just so that you know.
According to--
It was not my--
Okay, okay, okay. All right, so I didn't understand that. But, so I'm just saying, I think the whole thing, the, the, out of the settlement and in the capital budget, it should, it should not be in there.
So my, my only--
I have a question for Justin, though. If, if we didn't take it from there, would you support taking it from somewhere else?
Not in this budget, no.
Not because?
That was going to be the condition.
That's the condition, that we take it from the settlement, and what Trish is saying is true. If it's settlement money, people really don't have the right--
We add it to the list of things we're going to figure out and put on our table for, after we've settled this budget.
Okay.
I mean, I'm fine with, as long as it comes out in both places, or goes in in both places. If it can't go in in both places, then it comes out in both places.
Because I understand we can't use that settlement money anyway, right?
I just want to fundamental, I don't disagree, and it sounds like you have a consensus, but I'm not persuaded that just because it's settlement money, that, that the voters can't vote on it on the FTR, just like they vote on all kinds of things that have restrictions. That would almost be like saying they can't vote on the labor unions, because we've already bound, bound the town. I mean, so it's, to me, that's--
No, but this was a court settlement.
And I don't, it does matter to me. It's the same thing. It's a source of all revenue. And frankly, I don't, I think it's not smoke-and-mirrors. It's transparent. Instead of us apparently unilaterally spending a quarter million dollars, you know, so I-- So I...
But we were told by a judge we had to spend that.
Right, so you make that case to the voters. And but to say that it shouldn't be on the docket, that's like, we say they can't vote on it. I just fundamentally disagree with that point, but it's, it sounds like it's moot.
Suppose the voters say no, then what do we do with the money?
Right, well, just like, all the time, this is the fundamental debate, right? I mean, what if the voters don't fund the police contract that we just hired, ratified? So I just fundamentally disagree that it's a problem to ask the voters to vote on spending. And if they choose not to, then, you know, then we can have another conversation about it.
Well, if...
But it sounds like it's moot because you're withdrawing the...
Probably.
Okay.
He's taking the money. Is it going to come out?
Yeah.
Because I also agree wholeheartedly with Tricia. I've been very, very... I'm just like, I don't want, yeah, I just didn't want the whole town to be responsible for something and there hasn't been enough of study on it and everything else. It's really, really bothered me. I just...
Okay, so it sounds like a consensus on that one, other than... What's next?
Okay, on the transfer station recycling center study plan, and I want to ask you on this. If we decide, if the town decides that we're going to have a recycling center, if this is what we budget for this year, can we build a recycling center in, you know, four months?
No, I don't think so.
Because if our deadline is November 2020, and the only thing that we funded this year is this study, then what do we do if we're actually going to build a recycling center?
I don't know.
I mean, that's not just a question for Jan. I guess it's a question for everybody, but...
The problem is that we haven't made a decision that's ultimately a political decision as to what you want to build, whether you want a transfer station, if so, whether it should be a big transfer station for the municipal solid waste or a smaller transfer station for the difficult-to-recycle items that are nonetheless recyclable. That discussion has been going on, but no decision has been made. So I can't really, you know, do the impossible and say when we're going to build it. That's a political decision that needs to be made at the town council level.
Okay.
Well, just on that one, my thinking and putting that in there is, we've heard and discussed that it's kind of have to decide what we're doing with trash. And that's there. If we decide to, we need to study, then the money's there. If the town goes in another direction and we don't need a transfer station, we don't have to, we don't have to spend the money on the study. That was just my thinking of it.
Okay. That makes sense. So on the town buildings, I'm a little confused. Because some of these things are... Some of these things, are they regular maintenance or are they for specific projects? Like, if you go back, Town Hall's got $9,000 in the maintenance budget. And I understand that something might need to be a capital repair if it's, you know, a one-time thing, right? Like, we have a plan, we're replacing these windows or something. But the regular maintenance that the buildings require...
It's in the other one.
Okay, so...
What's this for?
So is there a list of what this is for? Because if I'm a voter, right, I want to know what is this that makes it capital? What is it for? Not kind of, this isn't the regular, oh, we got to patch the shingles or like, you know, there's a piece of rotted wood or we got to replace a door hinge. So what is this for?
When I first looked at it as, with the awareness that, for example, in the planning and building office area, we have a not very efficient use of space. It may not even be adequate space to really house the different people who have to work that area. One way to deal with that is through a renovation that reorganizes the space and makes better use of it. Somewhat related to that is the issue of record storage in this building, which is not in the finest shape. It's in terrible shape, to the point that you have to wonder, you know, whether it's appropriate the way we store records downstairs. And we're also running out of space. There is a way to make better use of the space that is available in this building downstairs, but it would require a true renovation or a rehab project downstairs to create a better space for record-keeping, for example. Those are the two items that I was thinking of when we developed it. Certainly, the storage, record storage issue is a big one. I think Nancy can talk a little bit about that as well. There are certain ways to do it, and otherwise we'll have to go offsite. Although, the long-term solution is really to go to electronic record-keeping, but we're not there yet.
So, none of this is recurring regular...
Not meant to be recurring regular maintenance, no.
Okay. But we didn't take the regular, because it doesn't make any sense to take that away either and then not have stuff happen. And then, the other two, the playground upgrades and the parts and the garbage and recycling, to me, those aren't really capital. I mean, taking...
Can I say something? Because in the earlier version of, the other version that you have of this capital plan, you have five years.
Yeah.
You see what happens in the five years. And it's spread out over different locations and different years in terms of what we can do with a certain amount of money to bring the recreational facilities up to where they arguably should be. And also do some planning in terms of, you know, what does the town need, if anything, in addition to the current recreational amenities that we have. So only looking at the 2019, '20 year doesn't really create a very, I think, informative picture. But this was the result of a multi-year analysis of what needs to be done. This one reflects, I think, the understanding that town farm is a priority to do something there, not only to replace the jungle gym that had to be broken down, but also to start looking at the fields and what needs to be done and to what extent it can be reconfigured. So that's really what you're looking at. And it's a very partial picture in this particular version of the capital plan.
My problem with the playground upgrades parts, at least what seems to be this year, it looks like it's to look around at various kinds of shades for playgrounds.
Shades?
Yeah. The description, at least in the backup material, it said, playground upgrades, American Park super shade, various sizes and shapes of shades and umbrellas. And I just think that's, A, a little bit premature because we don't really have the playgrounds there. And secondly, I'm frankly concerned, they're not, they're just going to get destroyed or stolen, personally. But, so that was my concern with that one. And then also the security cameras, I think, are a little bit premature, so.
That's not in there.
Take them out with a BB gun, I guess.
Okay, any other comments on capital?
No, I just want to say that I am a little worried about capital, too many capital expenses that, you know, a $1,500, like, those aren't necessarily, you know... I mean, garbage and recycling, we buy those every, all the time. That's not really a capital thing.
As long as there's a budget for it.
I understand...
There's no budget for it right now.
I understand, well, then, but you put it in DPW and like, give it, I mean, because we...
That's fine.
Buy recycling and garbage bins as we need to. And actually, there's grant money for recycling, for buying bins. In the, there's actually grant money for that. I think there's still money in that account.
I'm just looking at it from an accounting definition. If it's an asset that's expected to last a year or longer, that's a capital item, right? Or if it's an item that's ancillary, so maybe it's a, maybe it's a garbage bin, but it's part of, if it's part of a big facility, then you can append it to the capital. But it's 1,500 bucks, one category or another. We've never done a document this well before, so I'm sure we'll keep refining.
We go again. You like that document, don't you?
Well, this is exactly the kind of discussion, I think, that's good. You know, we need to have, you know, rules of, you know, sort of a chart of accounts type of... Okay. So I'm hearing a pretty strong consensus to remove the Bay Street area remediation. Is there any other discussion on capital? And we're going to turn quickly to revenues and then get to work.
Capital.
We have another...
Equipment replacement.
Looks great.
I don't think you have much.
Well, a lot of it was simply moved, right? So the equipment replacement was mostly a movement from the current docket. And the fire department has a new request for a rescue truck. So the only adjustment to the ask was for a used bus for the senior centers. Want to hear rationale on that, or we know you've got to, you can't quite fund everything all the time?
Is the senior bus that we have now working?
Yeah. It's working, but it's questionable how reliable it is. Certainly, the director is concerned about that. There's been a discussion before about...
Still working.
Some people think that we should be able to get another one from Ripter or whatever. And it's not clear that we will be at the front of the line since we've had a couple of them since then. But we'll keep looking.
But we need to fund it if we're going to try and... All right, so...
All right, and then on the revenue numbers, we have an updated revenue report, which, what is it?
Oh, I have one more question, sorry. On the copiers and printers, are those, are we, are those we're buying or are those leases?
Probably leasing. Actually, this would be purchasing. I think at that time, it was still that we put in so that we could buy more. But I'm frankly coming around to, going back to leasing, but you may have a different...
And do you have an idea of what the cost would be?
I have a spreadsheet that Nancy currently has, actually. We just did an inventory of all the equipment that we have in Town Hall and which ones should be replaced, approximately in what sequence, and what the associated costs are.
And so it would be the leasing costs in the upcoming fiscal year?
It could well be, yeah.
Well, what would it be, the dollar amount?
What would it be? I don't have it in my head, but I need to get that spreadsheet.
Is she accessible?
Well, I guess, again, if we're going to lease them, it, you know, 12,000, like, well, we don't know what the number is. But then the question is...
There are three or four that need to be, that are getting to the point where they need to be replaced.
Right.
Nancy's is the first one.
But I guess what I'm saying is, in that case, do they belong in capital? Or do they belong in each department as a recurring...
Expense.
Operating expense, if we're going to lease them? I'm not...
I don't know either. I just think that it helped to group it together as IT infrastructure because the copiers and printers increasingly are part, you know, the network and part of that system. I don't know if, as a matter of principle, when you lease something, it's no longer a capital item. I don't profess to know the rule.
My thinking on that is if we're leasing it, you're either in a department or if we want to put it under recurring major time finance payments, that might work. I think it ought to be in the operating budget just because the distinction is clear when you set aside your fund balance. It's operating because the ideas you're covering for things you have to pay for, capital expense you don't necessarily have to pay for if something happens.
Right. I mean, I'm only asking these questions so, because I don't want to make things that make the budget not smooth because one year we stuck them in capital and then realized we got to stick them back over into, like, if we're going to do it this way from the get-go, let's try and get things in the place where they're going to live long-term.
Do we have an estimate of lease payments in the first year?
No, because I would need to figure out which ones are meant to, or should be replaced when I can't very quickly... You may be able to, you're much better at these than I am, but you may be able to tell from this.
Well, I might suggest we don't need to have perfect precision on this. We obviously need to take a vote, but there's another month or so of work for the Budget Committee. We can obviously give them supplemental information. Their choice is theirs, of course, but, so maybe the thing to do is to just to move the 12,000 into operating. It's not going to get lower, I would hope.
Jan, you said there are three or four copiers that need, that are going to need replacement?
That's my understanding, right. So we have Nancy's, you have, I believe, the one here in Mary Lou's office. I think the one in the tax collector's office is, if I'm not mistaken. I'm sorry, I can't...
But in the first year of the replacement process, you'd be looking to replace four, is that?
So they're 300 a month, three or four green each. So I think it's in that ballpark, right?
Is that a month? Well, if we do it, 36 a month.
So, Rob, when we're doing the voting, we're doing on Justin's town council numbers, right?
Well, what I think we should do, we need to very quickly talk about revenue, especially since it went up. And then what I was going to suggest, we have a motion on the floor, and I think the proper procedure is to take motions to amend. If anybody has a motion to amend, I have at least one.
I have a couple.
Do you want to talk about revenue first?
I have a question. If I, I'm amending my own motion on revenue, I don't need a vote on that, right? I just do it in a second and second, or do I need to make a motion?
I'm not sure you made a motion on revenue yet, did you?
No, I, my intention with my motion was to move the whole package.
I see, okay, that's fine. You can restate them. Did you get a second?
Oh, of the revenue, the whole package?
The motion was to move the budget to those starting points.
Yeah, so we had a starting.
Justin's, Justin's budget, yeah.
So what are you going to make a motion to?
I just wanted to amend the revenue to reflect the latest estimate. For the record, so that would be the new base. So without objection, I guess, I'll amend my motion to change revenue as follows. Recording fees to 140. Building permits, that's 1,000, building permits to 169,000. Inspection fees to 55,700. Miscellaneous revenue in a building inspection, 400. ZBR application fees, 2,700. I don't agree with the new private detail amount. And high-cost special at 71,478.
This is the new one.
Oh, and landfill at 22,500. I think the police detail at 100,000 is low, so I'm going to maintain my number at 114,636.
I agree with that. Second.
Is there a...
Is he making a motion?
What's the net?
The net effect of those changes is to change the bottom line by 13,000, to increase it by 13,843.28.
Increase the 17,000 number?
Yeah, this will increase, the number previously was 17,825,386. The new number would be 17,839,229.
The police.
The police detail, I think my estimate's good.
May I ask a question? So, things passed each other sort of in time when Nancy distributed new estimates with the agenda and the backup materials. And then your proposal came in with a separate set of estimates that were slightly different. You're now adjusting it to be consistent with, okay.
Exactly, except for the police detail.
And the only thing that you then add is the very last section of your estimate revenue.
Right, but that's included in my proposal, which was what I moved, so that's...
The number.
Okay.
The bottom line number.
No, not the bottom line, what is right above that.
Yeah, those...
If you look at it, the fund balance withdrawal, things like that.
That's in, that's included in what I've moved.
Okay, I guess I don't know what moving means anymore, but...
Well, my intention... Well, my intention when we began was to move my whole package, the expense budget, the capital, and the revenue. That would be our new starting point from which we, so if anybody wants to move to amend things, we'd be amending.
Okay. All right. Sorry, I get it.
That was, that was my intention. I'm sorry, I wasn't clear.
You're right, Justin.
I'm sorry. Just, just to take Justin's revenues and put the, put the new revenues in there.
My understanding is that the original motion has been simply restated. I guess you said amended, but basically restated. I guess technically, if we want to be squeaky clean, that would require, since it was your second, the first time. Did you withdraw your first motion?
Well, yeah, and I'll replace it with these new revenue numbers, whatever the.
Okay. And so, the question is for Nancy, are you okay with the withdrawal of the first motion?
And the restatement.
And the restatement.
The restatement of.
We bumped up the revenue by 14 grand.
But we're still moving the whole package with the restatement.
Yeah, just.
But we're not moving.
The packet with the amended revenue.
No, I'm confused. I move it to where? I think the answer.
It's a motion to.
No, just a motion.
Move the packet with the new revenue, with amended revenue.
So, we only have one live motion on the floor, and we're about to entertain motions to amend.
But that doesn't mean we can't change.
Oh, absolutely.
Oh, no, no, no. This was just because, because it's my motion, I didn't have to move to amend.
And it's all this revenue, but not the police detail?
Police detail? Justin's is higher.
Yeah, it's going with the one that I had estimated, not the 100,000 dollars.
I think he's right.
Which is it, for those of us looking to make some additions and subtractions and net it all out, the net effect is you've put 14,000 more on the table.
Yeah, 13,843.28.
Okay. So, we can, we can do this one at a time. I just, I just wanted to share, I have, looks like 13, I'm a little fuzzy on police, so at some point, I want to discuss that, but.
Spoke with the chief, and he thinks that the numbers between the two documents are close enough to what he thinks will be possible to get this, this year. So, he could, he thinks that the 114 is, could be realized.
Oh, the detail, oh, okay.
No, I'm sorry to be more specific. My question.
He's talking about salaries.
Is, right, do we need to fund the salary line, or do we expect the offset to be somewhere else, perhaps in overtime or somewhere else? Or are you, are you conceding that we need an adjustment to the police contract line?
Yeah, come on, Denise, I guess. Rob can't see you behind the pole.
Yeah, I'm like, who's everybody looking at?
Yeah.
Can I ask a few questions? Okay.
This is our treasurer.
Oh, I'm sorry. Denise Soret, town treasurer, taxpayer in Tiburon. Originally, when we put this budget together, we had included the salary increases for those contracts that were under negotiation, and then you folks had a special meeting, I think, on a Saturday, and you voted to take it out of there and put it into the contingency fund. So, I calc.
It didn't reflect that.
Right, well, exactly.
It did reflect.
The original one.
Okay.
So, we took it out. Jan came back to me, and he said, take out the potential raises and put it into contingency. So, I calculated what that was going to be, plus the social security, plus any pension ramifications, and that came up to 88,500, which was why the contingency request went from 100,000 to 188.5, because that's where all of the salary increases for police and fire were, and that also covered social security and their pensions.
But since then, that's been approved, we're pretty much, that's written in stone that that's what it's going to be.
Right.
So, it could go back into the operating.
Well, it could go back into the operating, but where am I going to get it?
Right, we've got to put a motion to put it back in there.
Okay, so.
That's what I was saying. That money's nowhere.
That money's nowhere.
Right.
Right now. So, there's no money for the second year of the increases.
Does Denise know exactly what the second-year amount is?
I do not. Well, yes, 88.5.
Including social security.
88.5 was, that was the number, if I did a 2% increase across the board for police and, and fire, plus their social security, plus any pension ramifications, because don't forget, 2% increase affects other things, their longevity, it affects the holiday pay, and those things go into pension, so all of that gets affected.
But it's actually 3%. It's actually 3% the second year. It's not 2%. 2% is the first year.
My calculation was only 2% because back then.
No, it's 3%. So, that's, that's even more than 88 now. We're talking 100, or more than that.
But just to, just to state the obvious, there have been ongoing negotiations, and I'm not sure that the treasurer's privy to.
Right, oh, yeah, I know.
Right, so.
But these aren't negotiations anymore. We both TA'd it.
On the police side. On the police side, right.
That's what I'm talking about. It's 3%.
Right. Okay, so, we'd have to do a little recalculations, but it was assuming 2% on all sides for both of those contracts.
Was the police, are the police getting another person?
That's fire.
That's fire.
What were you talking about before I got up here?
We were talking about the salaries and where to put that.
Details, revenue, oh, okay. Just a couple of points in one of the slides, and then on the supplemental revenue that was added at the very end with the, the reserve carryforwards, the capital reserve carryforward. If you look at a regular monthly report, you've spent some of that this year.
Right.
This fiscal year, you bought a truck and carpeted the town hall, so that 116 is no longer available. It's like 53,999.
Say that again, it's what, 50?
54,000.
Well, it might not be if they buy the Harp.
And, and that was, I heard discussions about buying.
So, how much is it? Instead of the 116, it's what?
And then, I did hear some discussion about buying the outboard motor. And the paving and draining carryforward, that was the carryforward from fiscal year 18 into 19, which, in keeping with the resolutions as we have in the past, it gets added to the current-year appropriation, and that is what's available for the paving program for this current year. Well, we've spent 323,000 as of last Friday. We just paid a really big Cardy's bill, so we don't have quite the 243, and I'm sure that we have 254 left, and I'm pretty certain that Mr. Rogers has indicated that there'll be more paving this spring.
Just to be clear, I, I took the total amount, and then I looked at the backup materials and totaled all of what had been planned to be done for the rest of the year, and that's how I arrived at what would be left. So, I didn't just take the carryforward and carry it forward again. I did try to account for what's expected to be spent this year.
So, you think the carryforward is wrong?
No, the carryforward number was right.
Okay.
I'm just saying that, to date, we just spent 323,000 to date in paving.
But we still have the 240.
But that didn't come out of the carryforward.
Well, the carryforward plus this current-year appropriation. And in, in my mind, first in, first out, so I spend the carryforward first, because that was really last year's money, and then I have what's left over for the current-year appropriation. And I don't know exactly what they're planning, but I.
It's right here.
It's usually the spring where most of the paving money gets spent, and the bill that we just paid was from the fall. So, it was this fiscal year, but, you know, there was some negotiating on the bill that he was doing with Cardy, so it was a little bit late in getting paid. Right?
Yeah.
But the number on the sheet is the correct number.
That's the correct carryforward, but I don't believe that that's going to be available by the time we get to the end of the spring and he's done all his paving.
Because our money for this year is gone.
Okay. So, we have the carryforward from 18, plus the current-year appropriation, so that we have.
So, the current appropriation is what you spent, that's gone.
That's gone.
So, whatever he does in May has to come from this carryforward.
Right.
Gotcha.
With the current funds.
The current fund's gone.
There may be some treasurer-type accounting language.
What?
We have X amount of money in the kitty that we're allowed to spend through June 30 as part of the program to do paving. So, by the way, Rick Rogers, DPW. So, we are meeting with Cardy for the springtime paving, this week or next week, and we anticipate, along with having to save some for drainage, cold patch, hot patch, for potholes, et cetera, coming very close to that number to finish off the paving on the roads that haven't been done and roads that have accelerated in their deterioration.
So, what you're saying is the appropriation for this year and the carryforward will be spent?
I, based on what he just said, plus what's happened so far this year.
It'll be spent.
It'll be spent.
So, that carryforward will not be available, it'll just be what we appropriated this year?
Whatever carryforward is left is the bits and pieces we scrape together at the end of the year from the rest of their operating budget.
Okay.
Hey, you all good news?
That might be a problem. Can I ask one more question about the, the revenue? On the, on the paving for, which I know is separate paving, for the industrial park, which, again, and I understand what, I understand what Mr. Coulter's saying about transparency. I don't know, so maybe we need another page in the budget or something. But I ask myself, if that's a voteable item, right, but the money's been already voted, I mean, in previous budgets, the voters have already voted to set that money aside to do infrastructure work in the industrial park. If we listed in the, in other words, should that be, should things like that be an addendum to the budget, like a, like, the voters voted for this, you already voted for this, but we're going to do it this year, but we don't put it in as part of the.
Not an appropriation.
It's not an appropriation.
That's correct.
Do you know what I mean? I'm all for the transparency part, but. It's confusing if you're voting on it. Yeah. So, I wonder if that should come out and be listed in an addendum thing, because the voters already voted to do that.
Well, they voted to.
Put it there.
Put the money in an account, and the way it's structured here would be voting to use the money for a purpose.
But the, but the purpose already was part of the account. It wasn't just like, we're going to put it in an account. It was voted for infrastructure, for doing, specifically doing infrastructure in the industrial park. That was part of what they voted it for. It wasn't just like, we're going to set this aside for something in the industrial park. It was like, this is what we're setting it aside for.
If I'm not mistaken, the difference is that.
Because it's not a new appropriation.
You have a capital plan. In order to make that capital plan feasible, you have to appropriate certain monies. What you need to appropriate is not the same amount as that is estimated to cost all of that, because there may be some monies already in place to pay for that. I had said that at the very beginning, that, you know, I didn't have the time to figure out exactly how much money, you know, is already in the kitty to pay for part of this. Because now, the problem is, do we need a separate document that says, okay, this is the actual appropriation that you proposed this, this year towards the capital budget?
I don't see why we would. I mean, everything here is estimates. I mean, some, maybe you don't spend so much on papers in a department, you still put a number here, and maybe you don't get as much revenue in a certain place, or you get more, you still put a number here, vote on it. I mean, it's not, so we're saying, this is a specific project in our capital fund. We're proposing to pay for it, and here's the revenue from, that we have set aside already.
But it's not, okay, but, but the point of the FTR, right, is to, is to vote on the appropriations, and this has already been appropriated. And, and if we're, if we do this the right way, in the future, we might even have a little bit more in terms of funds that gets appropriated. Say we want to buy something expensive, but instead of paying interest on it, we say, for the next three years, we're going to set aside this money so we can pay cash for this. I'm just making that up. And we ask the voters to do that. Well, that money's set aside for specific, it's already been, it's already been appropriated. And I think, you know, I think it would be more transparent for the voters to know that we're doing what they voted to do with it, and we shouldn't be hiding that, but I don't think this is an appropriation, because it's already been appropriated for this specific purpose.
Maybe to try to bridge the gap, in this case, if it was a resolution and not a, not a docket, and maybe there's a distinction between, okay, it's restricted for infrastructure, but the voters never said, what does that mean? Does that mean paving? Does that mean sewer? Does that mean drainage? And so, this is adding more clarity. So, in this case, maybe you just want to err on the side of letting them vote again. And then, to your point, we need a more global look. I mean, this is something that we spent a lot of time on, on the Charter Review Commission, which is, you know, why are all these pockets of money not going in front of the FTR, and the strong majority of us on the CRC feel the charter's quite clear, every single penny that goes in the town coffers goes to the FTR. In this case, maybe it did already, once. And the question is whether it had enough, first of all, it was in a resolution, not as a budget proposal, and secondly, was there enough guidance? And was it the expectation of the voters that infrastructure is whatever, I guess, we decide it is? So, that's.
Not quite as broad, I think.
No, I think it's more, it's pretty specific.
It's very specific.
It's very specific.
Paving and the industrial park.
And drainage, yeah.
Yeah, it's.
Not industrial park, that's totally different.
No, no, not the paving, we're talking about industrial park. Yeah, 25% of the sales go back to. Okay, well, I do think that, I don't know if we need to answer every single one of those questions tonight. We have, the Budget Committee will own the docket, the docket, and as long as the numbers and the bottom line are, are there. Okay, so, what, it's 10:30. We've been doing this for three and a half hours. Are we going to, we're going to plow on? Are we going to continue this meeting until tomorrow night? What do you, what do you, what's your pleasure?
And tomorrow night, I'm, I'm on call all night.
I'm not really excited about continuing the meeting, because we haven't really posted it. I think we legitimately can, but should we?
Yeah, we don't have to post it. We're continuing.
I have, I have, I have, I'm just showing all my cards. I have like 10 or 12 line items to suggest changes to. They all add up to a net change of zero. I guess we need to talk about.
Well, I have.
The police and the, yeah, I'm just, maybe you have another dozen. How many? We've got to talk about this police funding, right? I don't know if Justin.
Well, we have to do that, and we have to talk about.
And then, there's the paving.
Right, and the contingency fund. I feel we need to elevate that. But they asked me and the team's discontent, because I don't know, where are you going to get that money when all of a sudden, we agree to it?
Well, that one, we haven't agreed to yet.
No, no, you haven't.
Police sounds to me like we.
Well, the police, you have to put 3% in there.
Quite clear to me where that line item is right now, unless it's somewhere in health insurance or overtime or the compensating savings.
What are you talking about?
The salary increases, of course, are offset by other, other negotiated points to some degree, so I don't know if globally, it's all in there, or if you think we should just err on the side of caution and add gross salary.
I don't think it's going to be in there, right?
As the treasurer suggests, find.
What is the increase in the second year altogether?
To the best of my ability, I, using all the knowledge I had of both negotiations, I built them into the budget as it stands and as I proposed.
But where is it?
Okay, so you're saying.
Well, we're not being transparent now, are we?
Well, we, we can't really, because we're still negotiating.
Well, we can with the police. The police is signed by both. The police is signed, all they're doing is putting it all together, but we agree to it, they agree to it. So, where is that money?
Well, my, I didn't just, I didn't isolate them. I took police and fire, figured out the number, and that contributed to my final contingency fund amount.
Okay, but that's totally not transparent. No, because where is the 3% raise we just gave the police? It's not, if, if it's in there hidden somewhere, as a town councillor, I need to know it's in, in there, or I can't vote for this if I don't know where it is, because to me, it
Because to me, it doesn't add up.
I combined it all, and so it's not just police, it's police and fire, which isn't fully negotiated yet.
But where is that?
But why, why don't we have the police salary in there, the three percent?
Can we put it in there?
We should.
Okay, so I'm going to put all my cards on the table and then you guys can, can, can beat it up. Is that a good place to start, or do you want to go first?
Well, I just want the answer to that, though, why can't we have the answer to that? So I'm going to make a motion to put three percent salary increase into the police salary account.
And the, well, it's not just the three percent salary, but if the-
Well, it's also the-
The three percent and all the trailing, um, effects on-
Social Security.
Benefit, social security, all the yada, yada, yada things to get driven by that.
So, just so I'm, just, just for this question of procedure, are we, um, and I'm comfortable with this, are we comfortable with, somebody's going to have to crunch a number like that, which means it won't be done tonight? I'm perfectly-
It'll be the treasurer should do it.
I'm perfectly comfortable with whatever consensus that the treasurer or the town administrator or somebody has delegated to finalize and transmit to the Budget Committee. Because, conceptually, I actually think I agree with your motion, but it's not going to have numbers in real-
My motion will, including my motion that the treasurer will work it out and put it into the budget.
And the bottom line will be the bottom line.
Bottom line will be the bottom line.
That, although I have to admit, the, and that's new for me, I mean, I'm used to at the end of the day, before we vote, I know exactly in dollars and cents what I'm voting for.
And you can make an estimate on the spot.
I think we have to come back tomorrow.
And here's the thing, it's not just that, but the, there are revenue numbers that are off in here, we don't have those. I mean, I, I, like, I want to know what, at the end of the day, that number looks like before I vote. I, that's just me, if everybody else is willing to have a theoretical thing, I'll go on.
No, I kind of agree with that, too.
Well, there's a middle ground, which, which is just making an estimate. So we can do some quick math and take three percent, took the gross salary line, plus it up another fifty-
I think she's trying to do it now.
And call it to the good, these are all estimates, so I'm trying to, you know.
We're, we're giving the budget, the best of our ability to the Budget Committee. State funds will change, other funds will change. By the time the Budget Committee's done, we'll, hopefully we'll have fire done.
But Justin, we know that we already gave three percent, I don't know what the problem is with that. Because I think you've put three percent hidden in here, but tell me where.
Okay, so what I'm, I, this is, this is fine, we're going to have some disagreements, that's okay, but let's, let's, let's keep working. So what I think we should do is let's make the best estimate that you can, if you're willing to do that, and let's take a vote on that motion to amend, rather than delegating to a number uncertain.
Are you figuring it out, Denise?
I mean-
Yeah, that's what she's doing.
Okay. Do you want to hold your motion for the moment, or that will be a motion to amend?
But then, but the question is, if what Justin's saying is the three percent is in here and Denise puts the three percent in here-
That we have too much in there.
Then, now we have six percent in here, so-
So where is it, though?
Possibly.
Okay, that, that I can't vote for, I'm going to tell you, I can't, that, that I can't vote for.
Especially if, if you share the view, as I do, that the contingency fund is too low.
This is a little crazy, though, that we don't know where that is in there, that we're councillors here, voting on a budget.
I already, I already told you where it is, I just, I'm not going to give detail because the firefighter negotiation isn't done.
But, but why can't we separate it, then? Why can't we separate it because we've, we've, we've already agreed on the police, we know that's concrete.
If you want to add that in, that's fine. I mean, at the end of the day, the contingency fund is too high or too low, a little bit.
Well, it's twenty-five thousand now, it's not going to-
And that's where I'm off, that's where I'm trying to bridge the gap here, if, if, if we agree, and I, I think at least you and I agree, that the contingency fund is, is too low, then even, even if it turns out that the police is overstated, then we don't have to spend it, just, that's the lesson for all of these items, just because it's appropriate doesn't mean we run and spend it.
Right, but the thing is, we're taxing people and then we're going to put it back in the general fund. I mean, that gets, that's all right, rather than spending.
But in particular, if we, if we know we're, we're too low in an area like contingency, which is part and parcel of labor, I don't think that's-
You know what we've taken out here?
Okay, so, why don't, do you want to-
Have you figured it out, Denise?
Why don't you maybe hold the motion? And otherwise, I'm going to suggest we split it in half and take the eighty-eight that we heard and divide it in half and put forty-four in. Or we, or we take the math out right now and we look at-
Well, I'll hold that motion, I'll make another one. So, I have another one for the contingency fund. I, I think we got to just make them and if they fail me for-
Well, would it be better to go page by page at this point? Or are some of you like me thinking of in terms like a package, or what, what's your?
I can go page by page because I wrote them as we did it, so.
Is there any objection to going page by page?
What is it?
And that's, that includes what?
Three percent in social security. No, the pension's totally different, right? Yeah, yeah. Okay, so my motion-
But does that like, but let me ask a question, does that like include longevity and all that other stuff?
Yeah.
But there are, there are offsets and help.
Right.
Well, then that should be fixed, then. I don't know what, right?
Yeah, I'm starting to think that maybe we need to see this.
When does this have to go in? To, well, it has to go to him. That's what really has to go.
Our deadline is Wednesday at, at midnight, I think.
So can we meet Wednesday night? Or can we meet somewhere else, library? No, we're going to continue it.
I, I think we can, you know, I'm not going to get in trouble if I play lawyer for the council.
No, 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 I think we can, I've done that before.
If we're not adjourning this meeting, we would continue the meeting and we'd have to put posts all over this building.
Yes, we can do that.
And maybe a free shuttle to wherever we're meeting.
No, no, we can do that, Nancy, I've done that before.
But I think that's-
Yeah.
Legitimate, it's videotaped, we'd video, we'd definitely videotape the next one.
So where can we go?
I mean, it'd be better to do it tomorrow night, but you can't make tomorrow? Nice to have Joe here, too, if we can get him.
I'm on call from seven A to seven.
So what, what day?
Oh, maybe he, he could make it on Wednesday.
What time are you on call to?
Seventeen to seventeen.
Let me just make a sanity check, do we have a working consensus to continue the meeting without adjournment? And I want, not going to happen unless it's unanimous, because I'm not taking some kind of open meeting complaint unless we're all on board with that.
What day are you meaning, what day?
I can do Tuesday, I can do Wednesday, our deadline is midnight at Wednesday. And from a practical perspective, we're going to hit the deadline, we've done a lot of work, but, you know, if a new number comes in and something changes five to ten grand, then we transmit that information to the Budget Committee and perhaps we persuade them, perhaps we don't. But it's not like this goes on the ballot on Wednesday night.
This isn't, no, this isn't, no, because we're giving it to them.
It's your last vote on it.
It's our last vote on it.
Then this is why in the charter review I asked for a change on this.
Exactly.
Then the administrator will sit on it for ten days. Not that he will sit on it, you are just saying, no, I mean, not that, that's what the charter allows. So now you, you run short of time and he can't do anything after your vote.
Well, I can't, I, I cannot guarantee I can make it tomorrow night. I'm on call from seven P to seven A, A, I could be there. I don't know, so it's up to you guys, if you want to do it without me.
Okay, so, does anybody else have time constraint, Tuesday or Wednesday?
Uh, no, although I have to, I'm going to, I have to be in Connecticut at four. I won't be able to leave Connecticut before four on Wednesday, but it's Eastern Connecticut. And unless there's really bad traffic, as long as we meet like at seven, I should be able to make it.
Wednesday?
We lose you Tuesday night.
This is due Wednesday, right?
I think it's, I think it's midnight.
Do it Tuesday. Okay.
It's his fault.
Are you here Wednesday night?
I guess I can.
You know what, do it Tuesday, and if I get called in, I can't be here. Do it Tuesday, Rob, if you want more time.
I, I just want everybody to be happy, so, I'm, I'm, I'd love to have Joe here, too.
I don't know that Joe's going to be-
I'm going to power on here, too, so.
I am, too.
You want to power on tonight? We'll power on tonight, but I have-
You want to take five minutes? Well, I think fundamentally we have to decide whether we're comfortable with an estimate or not. I am comfortable with an estimate, but, um, I don't want to pressure people if they need more time, so.
Well, that wasn't an estimate.
Justin, here, you've laudably wore the bullseye on putting something here that we can all beat up on. Do, do you have a strong preference one way or the other, or?
Um, I'd rather-
I'm sure we'll all walk away from the table unhappy about something, which is probably a good thing, so.
If we're going to continue, I'd rather just continue. Because I, I don't want to settle on one piece now and then have time to rethink the other pieces. I, I think if we're continuing, we need to, the whole package on one night.
Does that mean, so does that mean tonight or tomorrow, or Wednesday?
I, I'm happy to continue, I mean, we're coming up on eleven o'clock, there are known unknowns. So if we continue to Tuesday or Wednesday, that's, that would probably be my preference.
And then maybe we can get more organizers, where?
I want three minutes to reflect this, that all six councillors, is there an objection? That are present are in support of not adjourning but continuing the meeting until tomorrow or Wednesday.
Up to you guys, I can't make-
So it sounds like it should be Wednesday, because A, that assures us, we can, we can obviously hold as long as we, we're here till eleven, so we'll give you as much time as it takes for you to get back in Connecticut. I mean, anything can happen.
She'll be here at seven, though.
That gives Joe another day, hopefully we can get Joe.
Maybe he'd be better.
Yeah.
Do we need a home, though, do we have a place Wednesday?
Where's your book next? Oh, that might be canceled.
I think we have to actually make this decision on the spot, because I think that's part of the whole-
But don't you have the book for the, the book for any? I thought you had a book with all the meetings.
You can look in at, what, the library?
I think we're required to make that call right now.
Hang on a second.
Maybe we should cancel that last one. It's all right, we're going to get ready.
Even if we just-
How long does the zoning board go, usually?
Well, it could go late, depends on how many applicants they have.
But I think they might cancel it, I heard.
I don't know, I, I wouldn't count on that.
I, I don't think we can count on it. How sure can we count on the library? Can our school liaison commit to the schools? Can you find us a home in the school department?
Can't, now.
Your funny feeling's usually pretty accurate.
Yeah, I know, I think she's-
So I would say, let me see, it doesn't say- Looks like the library's open.
Well, we don't talk politics.
That's a, that's a hassle. Let me just check the senior center.
Well, the senior center's big enough that there's space somewhere in there, right?
Wednesday, Wednesday, you're talking the seventh. Oh, I'm in the wrong, I'm sorry, sorry.
She's in two thousand and eighteen. Well, that's a problem.
All right, well, anyway, I don't see anything on this one, so let's try the senior center on.
The senior center is usually not booked.
It's not like a try, like, we'll be holding the meeting outside on the sidewalk, because we can't miss the deadline. Whenever we announce to the public now, we have to follow through on that, because I'm not-
Rob, wait, hang on a second. What you can do is we go to the senior center, have it in the little room with the public.
That's not the worst case scenario.
And then, and then we say, we're going to move to town hall because it's too many of you. Because town hall is now clear because of zoning. As long as you go there, you can move it again. It's, it's the weirdest thing in the world, but we did that once.
Yeah.
We kept moving it because the people got bigger and bigger. Not that it's going to happen, I'm just saying that if somebody sees it. But I'll call for it, I mean, I wish I could do tomorrow, but I can't guarantee.
So you're asking about- No, I don't think the library, I think the library's booked. The community room is booked.
Unlike in the senior center, there's, there's only ten, twelve people in the audience.
The library's open, it's booked?
The library looks booked, it doesn't say what's there, but it's got red bars through it.
And we'll just kick those people out and bring them somewhere else.
Well, the senior center has enough rooms that, given the audience that we have today, it's reasonable to assume that that room could accom, that building could accommodate more than one room.
So senior center at- All right, so I make a motion to-
Problem is, I'm not going to hold down the array, PA system and all that, you have to speak loud. Because it's too much to hold all the- It's not set up for that.
Okay, so the proposal is going to be that this meeting is going to be administratively continued, not adjourned. Administratively continued and not adjourned until seven o'clock on Wednesday, March sixth, at the Tiverton Senior Center, which has an address of-
Something Connecticut.
On Connecticut Street in Tiverton. That meeting will start at seven o'clock, we will immediately post notice in this building. And online. And the senior center, and then, did we post a physical notice anywhere else? This meeting, other than the senior center here?
Don't you have to do it with the library? Don't we always post meetings at the library? That's where we-
I'm not going to do a whole thing again, it's just-
No, but wherever we physically post it, this one, we want to put-
It, it has to.
Are there any questions from the public on what the procedural posture is? This meeting is not adjourning, it is administratively continuing, taking a recess for about forty-four hours until seven o'clock on Wednesday, March sixth. Is that, are there any questions about that?
Need to vote on the continuance, right?
I think that would be a very good idea, all right, all right. Do we have a motion to that? All right, in a second, please. And is there anyone which is to speak in opposition? Second call, are you hearing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, this meeting is not adjourned, but is administratively continued in recess for forty-four hours or so, seven o'clock.